My business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have one proclamation first, so John, if you'll meet me at the podium. Just a few preliminary remarks here. We've all had an opportunity to participate in some fundraising and some activities that have kind of started off just before Thanksgiving and continued through the holiday season. And you have to be impressed with all the organizations that are out doing things for other people. And it ranges from this organization which provides things we don't think about too often, which are warm socks for people who have none, all the way to supporting Bread Basket and a wide variety of needs across the community. So we're very blessed to have such a giving community, and we'll recognize one of those tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Dodson. Few notes, so I don't ramble, but thank you, Mayor Dodson, and the commissioners and staff, and also the Manhattan community, for helping promote by this proclamation the awareness of the need for socks for the homeless and the less fortunate right here in our own community. Socks are the least donated article of clothing and the most requested. In the last five years, the Socket To Em Sock Campaign has donated over 30,000 pairs of socks right here in our area. And we've done that with Manhattan Emergency Shelter, the Crisis Center, the Fit Closet, the Community Health Ministry in Wamago, and the Friendship House in Ogden, and we're also in all 15 schools right here in our own school district. And this is all done through grants and cash donations and people just like yourselves. The No Socks to Work Day, on Wednesday, November 12th, you can go about your day without your socks. It'll make you more aware of the need for socks, and then donate a pair of socks in the 21 different boxes that we have around the community. Check out our Facebook page, it'll have all of the list because it's way too many to list tonight, but our Facebook page is the Socket To Em Sock Campaign, Manhattan area. Thank you.
Gary, if you read the proclamation?
I'd be glad to. Whereas, socks are the number-one clothing need for the homeless as they wear out faster than any other article of clothing and are rarely donated. And whereas, the Socket To Em Sock Campaign has designated the second Wednesday in December as Socket To Em Work Day, a day when residents are asked to forego wearing their socks as a show of solidarity for the homeless and to recognize the great need of homeless persons everywhere for warm socks. Now therefore, Michael Dodson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, proclaims Wednesday, December 12, 2018, as Socket To Em Work Day in the City of Manhattan, Kansas, and encourages all residents to take off their socks on December 12 and donate new socks for the homeless from now through December 31, 2018.
And today's National Sock Day.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, now we'll call for public comments, and these are comments that are not contained on either the Consent Agenda or the General Agenda. And is everyone pretty much aware of the new ordinance that we have governing this kind of discussion? If not, I'll just cover that briefly. You see, we have a timer on the right. That is a five-minute timer, so everyone gets an opportunity to speak for five minutes. And when we passed this ordinance, we thought that particularly for items when there's a lot of people with a lot of interest, we need to give everyone an opportunity to speak. So there'll be a 30-second warning, one beep, and then you'll get the final beep that'll designate five minutes or up. There's a sign-in sheet that's up at the podium, so if you would, when you come up, tell us who you are and where you live, and write that down before you leave so we can keep track of all the comments. So I'd ask anyone with any comments at this time to please come forward and state your name and let us hear from you. Well, with all of you out there, I thought maybe people came for candy or something and maybe no comments. All right. Well, now we'll close that session and ask for Commissioner's comments.
I just want to say thanks real quick to the Flint Hills Bread Basket in Old Chicago for organizing and putting on the community Thanksgiving dinner. I'm from a small town in southern Kansas, Anthony, Harper, Kansas, and I wasn't able to go home because of the weather, so that community Thanksgiving Day meal meant a lot to me because that was really the only one I got to participate in, and I met some really great people while I was there, and so I just want to thank those two organizations for that service that they provide to our community.
Okay, just want to remind everybody, dress warm and show up for the Mayor's Lighted Christmas Parade this Friday at 5:30.
Okay, and tomorrow has been designated as the National Day of Morning, so if you have any business in any of our government offices, State, Fort Riley, K-State, City, whatever it is, you might want to just check your website and see that office is open. Some will not be open tomorrow, and it would be in your best interest not to waste time driving someplace if it's already closed. And this applies to some, like I said, some offices, even on Fort Riley if you're used to going there. For a lot of the other facilities are open, so I would hate to make the assumption that everything is closed at the same time. So just giving you a heads up, just to check and make sure. Thank you.
We mentioned a few minutes ago that we've had many activities of the holiday already. We had the Festival of Lights, and for those of you who were able to come down or to listen to that, this was the largest tree of its kind in the state of Kansas and arguably across the nation, and it's a thing of beauty. It's got thousands of lights on them, all controlled by a computer. The whole thing is beautiful, and all that is done by our local businessmen and other volunteers. We had Santa Claus come in, and if you watched, we had a quadcopter that had a little red light on it, and that told the kids that that was Rudolph's nose flying across, and I think they really had a great time down there. Then we had the Festival of Trees, and hopefully made a little bit of money for that organization that tries to help through volunteerism. On Saturday morning, we had breakfast with Santa Claus, and they had two sessions, one was last Saturday, one will be the Saturday coming. 150 at each one, that was kind of the limit. Got a lot of great comments back from moms and dads that brought their little kids in there, tried as best we could to serve them a breakfast and then help them make gingerbread cookies and bird feeders, and let's see, the other one was a little parachute device to try to hit a target. And then they had Santa Claus. And that Santa Claus was outstanding, as was Mrs. Claus, and they really seemed to enjoy it. So lots of activities. As the wind said, we've got the parade coming Friday, and as always, Commissioner Butler does a terrific job decorating the fire truck, and all we've got to do is put a top on there with a warming tent inside. Yeah. And wait to see what he has on when you see him. We also had a discussion tonight at our 5:30 session, and we didn't have to think about this too long, but I think on behalf of the city, we want to recognize Coach Snyder, and we'll do that in a formal way. But what a terrific spokesman, what a terrific leader for our community and our college. You just couldn't ask for better over 27 years of service. Obviously, he's not going anywhere, and we still have the ability to call on him for the kind of leadership that he's exhibited so far. So we're very proud of him and his family, and we'll recognize him again in some more formal way in the near future. Any comments for... All right. Well, the next item of business is the Consent Agenda. These are items that we have considered before or which are more of a housekeeping nature. And if any one of the commissioners has a further question or objection, generally speaking, we take those to the end of the agenda and consider the General Agenda and consider them there. So we have any questions?
I don't have anything that I want to delay until the end of the agenda, but I do have a question on Item D, which is about the final plat for the Kimball Town Homes, Unit 2. And on the plat, or yes, on... It says, "There will be no special assessments imposed under the Act on property within the boundaries of the district." And Jason, I wondered if you could explain what that means? Because ordinarily, there are assessments on most new developments.
Sure. Within CIDs and TDDs, there's the ability to assess property through special assessments. We don't intend to do that with this property. It doesn't preclude them from moving in the future down a benefit district route and using special assessments in that manner.
In that regard? So they still could... Well, somehow they'll have to provide the infrastructure.
You would anticipate that in the future, yes.
So that would be the benefit district?
If they pursue public infrastructure, yes.
Okay. Public, as opposed...
Yeah, they can do private on their own lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ron, on Item J, could you just go from start to finish what that RFP process would look like? And if the committee does select an applicant, what boards that will flow through and what the final approval process is?
Sure. I'll take a stab at it and ask Jason, who's been handling the item, to back me up a little bit on that particular item. But before you deny it, as a request for proposal outline, for your... If you were to approve that tonight, that starts a process where we will publish the RFP. There's a pre-proposal meeting, so interested parties can learn more about the history of the Community House and different aspects. The RFP lays out some of the points that certainly are emphasized with regard to the Community House and any use that proposer might have for its use. We did get to the Historic Resources Board prior to this and had their input, and they have a representative that they've suggested to be on that selection committee. They recommended additional time to be considered for the proposal process, and so that's been done for basically a two-month period for that to start. Those were... The current deadline would propose that the RFPs be back in by February 8th. The selection committee that would be assembled would then review those proposals and ultimately make recommendations to the city commissions, and it'd be to your perspective and prerogative as to if you wanted further input from other advisory boards and that sort of thing. I know the Parks Board discussed it as well, and so that certainly... Obviously, the Parks and Recreation Department has a more recent history of its use for the community, but there's a long history of use by the community and recognition that it is on the National Register. The city commission has... And past commissions have put in substantial study on the facility as for accessibility standards, and it's had limited improvements over time. It was part of the quality-of-life bond issue back in '87. That was the most probably significant improvements that were made with some accessibility improvements that are kind of worn out with a lift, and so that's kind of the process that would come back to you all to determine whether or not there's a specific proposal or you want to... You know, the committee itself will weigh the proposals and might have a further process to analyze if there's numerous ones to consider.
So if the committee does select a proposal, the way that the standard's set now is it would come to the commission straight away, but it's our prerogative if it goes through some advisory boards first, correct?
Yeah. I mean, if you want to enter that into the process and refer it to somebody, that's a possibility.
If we... If the other commissioners would agree, I think if we pass this tonight, it would be applicable for us to make kind of a suggestion or a promise to the community that this will go through the Historic Resources Board and the Parks and Rec Board before it comes to the commission. I'd rather not us have to make that decision to send it back after the committee has selected someone. I'd rather it just start there and we make that commitment tonight. So that's really all I have to say on that.
About how this could actually look. So when a proposal comes in, the community and the commission, it won't be the final product. This isn't like they're putting a price down to buy a piece of real estate. This isn't like they're responding to a very detailed RFP where we're going to go to award a contract. This is proposals coming to you all to see if you're interested. If you are interested, it would... It may be better to actually develop some parameters to get feedback from those advisory boards. Sending that proposer to the advisory board, probably going to generate a lot of questions. Questions that really the commission need to weigh and give input and feedback on. So it may be a process where you do hear the proposals, we get your feedback. If you do want us to go to Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Historic Resources Board, and get input and feedback before you start negotiating terms, that's very acceptable. I just... I worry about the number of questions those boards will have, just based on a broad proposal.
Which, that's fine. I just... I want to make a commitment that the city commission is... The city is not going to give up rights to that building without the Historic Resources Board and the Parks and Rec Board essentially reviewing... So if it makes more sense for it to come to us first and go there, I just... I would rather us, when we're talking about this tonight, have an assurance that it's going to go to those boards and they're going to get to see something as well. It's not just going to come straight here. We're going to approve something, and then the Community House is gone.
And I just reiterate, that those questions from those boards are there, and if we can digest what it is that's being proposed, and if you all develop some parameters again and want feedback, that seems very appropriate to me. Just sending them the proposals without any guidance may be a little problematic.
I'd like to make sure, too, that in our criteria, that we mention the integrity of the historic nature of the building and our interest in continuing that historic designation. And I don't see it there, but you may have it somewhere else, but...
And again, it's one of those things that, as a commission, when you see certain proposals, I think you're going to be able to tell. It was clear in '13 when the state visited us. If that dance hall, which is now used as a gymnasium, changes and structure is put in that area, SHIPA will take it off. I mean, it's very clear on what we can and can't do without losing that state historic designation. So as you see proposals...
No, I don't want to wait for the proposals. I want us to be clear in the beginning that that's our expectation.
If that's the governing body's expectation, absolutely, we can add it.
So that when they come in, the proposer knows that, too, that that's an interest we have.
Jase, isn't that clear in the RFP? You know, from what I read, that it seemed pretty clear to me that, you know, we got a request for proposals, and we've put in there all the historical data, and we expect people to consider that because that would be one of the goals. And then the idea is to come out ahead, you know, from a city standpoint, so that we're not spending a lot of money to maintain a building that we're not getting any real return on. But to me, that's what we're trying to balance, and hopefully somebody will come across with an RFP that does that. We're probably not going to even consider one if somebody says they want to take a bulldozer and flatten it, you know? That's not going to happen. All right? And so, you know, I don't see the need to get anything else done right now except let's get the proposals in and see if any of them meet the general idea of keep the historical nature of the building, save the city some money, and repurpose it.
To go as far as Commissioner Morse is willing to go, I think I would need a vote right now on how many of you actually want to maintain the state and national historic designations, because there are potentially proposals out there that'll remove those. And if that is going to be a criteria that you would all like to see in this RFP, we can add it.
What is number five? I think... I thought number five covers that. It doesn't now. It's a criteria for consideration.
To show compatibility. It doesn't require the proposal to maintain the state and national registration. It's just asking it to be sensitive to it.
The state will take it off if we do what?
That 2013 report talked about the dance hall and the use of it. And if you're going to go into that area and create a different type of use, apartments, offices, put any type of partition walls at all in that area other than an open space that can be used by the community... I'm not the expert, but Eric can maybe chime in here, but my understanding is it will come off the state designation.
Was that in our packet?
That '13 report is.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't read between the lines enough to...
So I would ask the other commissioners if they're about their interest in continuing the historic designation on the...
See, my thought on that is if the proposal can be done to make that happen, fine. But if it can't, you know, my primary goal is you've got a building there that, you know, in my estimate, you know, I can go punch my fingers through the window frames on the ground floor. The ADA accessibility doesn't work. We're talking, you know, way over six figures to maintain that building. So just because it's historic, you know, are we willing to, you know, have the property taxpayers shell out half a million to a million dollars to maintain that building and it not be used for hardly anything? So I don't want to preclude that, but I hope somebody can come up with a proposal that would maintain that historic designation. But I wouldn't preclude looking at options that don't when it comes to saving the amount of money we'll have to put into that building over the next few years. And that's why I've pushed for it for the past three or four years, to repurpose that building in some fashion, because we're going to invest a lot of money in that building if we keep it. And to do it just because it's historic, I'm not sure I buy that.
Now, I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Morse's comment. I think it's important to keep it with that designation. I didn't know we had to require it in here. Somehow I assumed falsely that that was part of the criteria. I didn't know it had to be a... It was not a requirement. I think that's pretty important. I think that's one of the reasons we haven't been able to move forward in the past how many years we've been here because of that designation. I do think it needs to be required. I don't know if we take that vote now or move it to the end or have a separate discussion about it.
The reason I bring it up, Commissioner, is the interested party that I'm aware of would change that use. And if we're not willing to go down that path, then I don't want to waste your time or their time.
I don't think we've known that before right now, though.
The other thing about it is if it loses that designation, then we have... I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we lose some control over it, even if we approve of the first buyer and say, yes, we love what you're going to do with it, and we lose that designation. If that buyer sells it to someone who decides to bulldoze it, the city has no means to intervene because we lost that designation.
The arrangement by which we sell that property or lease that property will dictate those terms. If it's a sale that includes both the building and the land, then you're accurate. If we just sell the building and keep the land and have a 50-year, 75-year, 99-year relationship with that owner, then we would have oversight. We can build that oversight into this. There are a lot of buildings downtown that are contributing buildings in our historic district. We have a downtown historic district. We have a lot of buildings that have leveraged credits as contributing buildings towards that historic district. Community House is on the state and national register. It is also a contributing building to our historic district. If that use inside would jeopardize both the state and national district designations... nominations... Designations, sorry. It would still be a contributing building as long as the outside of the building met that threshold. There are a lot of what-ifs with all these scenarios, but you could create a relationship where the city maintained control and a relationship with that owner of the building for the long term. You could create a scenario where they're still leveraging tax credits even though that designation goes away. We've come up with at least a half dozen scenarios financially to leverage tax credits internally. We're not sure what the prospective proposals will be, but we do know those credits could be potentially available.
I'm less concerned with the tax credits and just more concerned about how we control it in the future.
We have a land lease with the mall. Since we've had that in place for 30 years, we've modified it at least a half dozen times based on needs of the current owners or the past owners. That relationship continues. This could be a similar circumstance if we're intrigued enough by the proposal to enter into that type of relationship.
The nature of this is now outside of what we normally do at the Consent Agenda, so if you are uncomfortable with proceeding with an RFP that has a multiple of outcomes that we can then decide on, then we're going to have to table this and come back to it.
I move we table Item J, is it? Item J to a different meeting session and remove it from the Consent Agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
Gary, you call the rule.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
And Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Any other discussion Consent Agenda items for short discussion? Well, we do have a couple of items on the agenda. We have one for this RFQ which will be negated. It was to select a commissioner, although we can select the commissioner now and then just hold that in abeyance until the item comes back. But this was a selection of a commissioner for the RFP for the Community House, and Commissioner Butler said he would be happy to do that, so that would be one. And then, were you also willing to do the one for the sanitary sewer on Setown? So if everyone's in accordance with that, we'll proceed. At this time, let's ask for any community comments on the Consent Agenda. So any item on that Consent Agenda that you wish to comment on is now open for comment. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and ask for approval of the Consent Agenda minus the item.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda without Item J.
Second.
Gary, call the rule.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to the General Agenda items. And we'll start off with Susan.
I am Susan Adams, the Director of the Flint Hills Discovery Center, and it's quite an honor to be here this evening to share some of our great news with our city commission as well as our... Thank you. I had a feeling I missed that up. It's nice when you have people that are willing to help you. Thank you, Jason. We're thrilled to be here tonight to present to you some important information that has come to the Discovery Center through our foundation. I know that as an action that you have requested, seeing some motion on, and I think you'll be very pleased to hear that this evening. We have been told by our Flint Hills Discovery Center Foundation that a generous gift has been made to them by our community donor, Marty Vaneer, and it is in support of the projectors, the immersive theater projector system, as well as specialized films. It's in about $417,950 to support those costs. For those of you that are unaware, Marty Vaneer and her late husband, Bob Kraus, in 2015 also contributed $750,000 to the immersive theater through the foundation, $500,000 to support the city's bond debt for the Discovery Center, and the $220,000 of that going to an endowment to support the... and the $220,000 of that going to an endowment to support the cost to facilitate expenses for the theater. There's quite a bit entailed into that technology. And we have continued to utilize that money, and we have appreciated that support from her. But it is time now, as the system has become very outdated, seven years. As we all know, technology changes very quickly, and our system is close to being obsolete. And Marty has believed in the vision of keeping that immersive theater being as progressive as the information that we have there to present to our guests. So we appreciate her support, and we think that her reflect... Her gift reflects our trust and belief in what we're doing at the center and even more so in our foundation. So I would like to ask at this time for Marty Venier to come forward, as well as Bruce Snead, the President of the Flint Hills Discovery Center Foundation.
Evening Commissioners, Bruce Snead, 810 Pierre Street. It's my honor and responsibility to be the President of the Discovery Center Foundation and have been since its creation in 2011. This represents another milestone for the foundation and for the Discovery Center and for the city. The Discovery Center is a treasure for this community and for this region. And this is another treasure in the form of a person who believes in the mission of the Discovery Center, to shepherd and steward and sustain the Flint Hills. And so I'm so thrilled that Marty has listened to this proposal and helped shape it. The Discovery Center staff created it, we vetted it, she reviewed it, and that's why we're here tonight. So I'm just so pleased that we can help sustain the Flint Hills Discovery Center through this gift.
Well, I don't know what to say except to say that I'm very pleased to be able to do this. I know if Bob were here, he would be very pleased to be here, to be able to extend the mission of the Discovery Center. Many of you in the room, I can see from your faces, remember Bob, know Bob, understand his passion for Manhattan, for the Flint Hills, for this area, for Kansas State. And this is just something that was very near and dear to our hearts. Bob was a Chicago kid, came out here, fell in love with Manhattan, fell in love with the Flint Hills. I taught him how to ride horses. At that point, he decided he was a cowboy. And that was one of the things that was just one of the lights of his life, was to be able to go out and ride over the hills and work cattle and really feel a part of this. So this is just a way to be able to extend that feeling and that mission. And these guys have said it all. I agree that I think the Discovery Center is truly a jewel. And I applaud all of you who were there in the day, who had to make the decision for the city to take the risk to create the Discovery Center. I think you will find that it... That the return on investment will be incredible. I'm very proud to be able to help. I know there are other people in the coming days who you will hear about who will also be willing to help support the Discovery Center. And you will find that it was certainly worth the risk that you took all those years ago. So thank you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that it's great to be up here and represent folks, but I'd like all the Flint Hills Discovery Center Advisory Board members, Foundation Board members, and volunteers for the foundation and Discovery Center to stand and be recognized.
Get up.
Because it is these folks that are all volunteers that make this kind of gift possible and future gifts as well.
I do want to just highlight a few of the benefits from installing these projectors. As I mentioned in my memo, currently we're spending around $20,000 out of the endowment to pay... And that's just for the projectors, to pay for lamps and repairs and updates just to the projector system. That doesn't have anything to do with additional costs for smoke and snow, all the extra pluses that happen. Shouldn't give those all away, but you've got to come see it if you haven't. But those all cost additional money, and that endowment helps support that. Again, a reminder that technology is almost seven years old. I think more than anything for myself, enhancing that film and making it back to what it looked like at the beginning when we started in 2012 is very important to me. The tides of time film is my diamond at the Discovery Center. And I think that it has lost a little luster lately, and I look forward to it looking as bright and beautiful as it did at the beginning. Again, it offers more technology in that theater, not just for the center itself, but again, for those who would rent our facility. We will have the capability now with these new projectors to show educational films and documentaries, which we've been able to figure out a little bit of that, but this will give us the opportunity to actually schedule those films and have them interact in connection with tides of time. So there will be no interchange that guests would experience with that. We've had lots of requests for this to happen. Many people had hoped that their projector systems that were installed in 2012 would allow additional films to happen. And only in the past year have we been able to really figure that out. But the new systems would make that transition so much simpler. It brings us to a new level of progression for the projectors themselves and the theater. And it also comes with a five-year warranty, which is a little different than what we received in 2012. These don't have any lamps that need to be replaced, so the cost should be... Maintenance costs should be much more minimal than what we've been expending. And more than anything, as I know you would like to hear, we assume it will increase attendance and revenue for the Discovery Center. In connection with the gift is the contract with a company called N-Wave. They are new to the Discovery Center, but they are a technology company that's very rare out there. These companies are new, and there are very few of them. They're working with the current Communications Electronic Design Company, which is called CED, which is the projector company we work with. There's a contract that we're considering with them for four films a year. We would get to choose those films. They have a very large library. Some are educational, documentaries, as well as entertainment. So just an example of some of the titles, The Little Prince, The Story of the Little Prince, 20,000 Leagues Under the Sea, Bugs, Robinson Crusoe, great films, short films that meet the needs of our theater. We don't think a 30... Anything over 30 minutes is a long time to set in that theater if you've been in there. So a short, enjoyable film is what we're after, and this kind of company meets that need. Again, we will show tides of time on a regular schedule because we're very proud of that, and we feel that's the message and the mission of the Discovery Center. But we also will have now an opportunity to show scheduled, formatted films. And again, we can tie those into whatever messaging we choose. We could do exhibits, special events, themes, or what we like to do most is partner. So there are films that we could partner with the zoo and collaborate and find a film that would benefit both entities. So I'm interested to see your... What your thoughts are on this and if you have any questions for me or for Bruce.
Any questions for Susan?
Just that I'm excited about this new feature, and I know that it'll be successful and you'll have more visitors because we're upgrading what we can do there. It just seems logical. And thank you very much, Marty, and all the foundation members for working so hard. It's a labor of love, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, of course, thank you, Marty, for all you do not only for the Flint Hills Discovery Center and Kansas State University, but for the Manhattan community in general. We are very proud to have you part of our family here and for you to take some time to come to City Hall. It's not the place most people choose to be most often, so thank you. I also enjoy the great engaging programs that the Discovery Center has been having. And it's more... It's evolving to become better and better and better and engaging more of our members and in the region to come and visit the Discovery Center. I just wanted to know if you can say a word or two of the New Year's Eve setup that you have going and how that's going to be for the family and what the deadline might be for people to sign up if they choose to.
You bet. That is a very popular event and will probably sell out, so if you're interested in purchasing tickets. It is on December 31st from 6:30 to 9:00 at the Discovery Center. It is a Flint Hills campout, I believe. I apologize, I'm looking to my curator of education that manages that. And it is full of fun family activities to engage kids, a lot of STEM focusing. That really seems to be our focus here at the Discovery Center. But things that people will be thrilled to be a part of. We do a lot of fun foods, interactions in the science learning capabilities. I apologize, I don't know some of the activities. They only tell me some things.
No, they're good. I've seen them. And you have a balloon drop. I know you have a balloon drop.
Oh, well, the biggest thing, and Yusha, you've been a part of that in the past, is we do have a balloon drop at 8:30, and that's the signal that it is over for the evening, in a sense. And parents are thrilled, and children are ready to go home, and everybody's pretty exhausted. It's a very fun evening, so thank you for mentioning that.
Any other commission comments? Any public comment? I'm going to close public comment and entertain a motion.
I move... Where am I? Oh, okay. I move that authorize the city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a direct purchase agreement for the four laser projectors with Communications Electronics Design of Louisville, Kentucky at the cost of $337,950 to be paid through a gift from Marty Venier and authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a two-year agreement of $40,000 with N-Wave of Los Angeles, California, for attraction films being paid through a gift from Marty Venier.
Second.
Let's call the rule.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We couldn't do this if we didn't have something more ceremonial, so... Best of mayor, Marty. Marty.
What?
It's appropriately large.
Yeah, this is appropriately large. Yeah, there we go. Nice and level.
Perfect.
This is... By the way, this is Bea Marie Martin, who's the Director of the Foundation. And without her, we wouldn't be here, so give her a hand, please.
I'm... No, not yet. I'm not as good as Bernie, so... Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
It's not hard to capture a smile. We admire your passion for this, and I think it's reflected in people in the community and their pride in that facility downtown. It's truly one of the kind of state's gifts, not a regional. And the dedication of the staff to make it even better. This is kind of a... Be a step for us, which is so valuable to our young people. So we're appreciative of this, and we're appreciative of your care.
We will now move to item B, which is to consider accepting the Aggieville Infrastructure Phase Two report. That's not Jason.
Uh, no, I'm not Jason. But good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Schmeele. I am a planner for the City of Manhattan in the Community Development Department. I'm here to introduce this item and give a little context to its origin and its role in the greater vision for the Aggieville area. I've been behind the scenes a lot during much of this, but I've had the pleasure of seeing the progress of this plan's development from the very beginning. So to start, the Aggieville Community Vision was adopted by the City Commission via Ordinance 7280 on April 18th, 2017. It was a culmination of about a year and a half worth of research, analysis, stakeholder meetings, public input, media blasts, and a community survey that reached over 4,200 people. We heard from a lot of different folks during that time. We heard from students, alumni, business owners, citizens, visitors. We heard from the Chamber and many others. And based on this process, I would sum up Aggieville in one word, and that is potential. Potential to do extraordinary things with Aggieville. And what we devised from that process was a pretty bold plan, and that plan aimed to squeeze all that potential out of Aggieville. And if I can brag on my department for a bit, this was a plan that won an award from the Kansas Planning Association in 2017 for demonstrating exceptional creativity, innovation, and community support. While it includes many ideas pertaining to district management, culture, community identity, and other things of that nature, it largely focuses on development, the physical environment of Aggieville. This is a plan that cherishes the iconic fabric of the historic core of Aggieville while capitalizing on underutilized resources on the periphery of the district to really expand that experience and to reinvigorate the fundamentals of what makes Aggieville special today. Generally, the Aggieville Community Vision Plan calls for a much overdue redesign of the streetscape and new concepts for Triangle Park. It emphasizes public space for pedestrians through increased amenities, wider sidewalks, landscaping, and temporary and permanent street closure and things of that nature. Also included in this plan is the construction of two parking garages on both the eastern and western ends of Aggieville. These urages are a much more efficient use of land that not only increases parking capacity in the district, but it opens up possibilities in Aggieville that were not available before. One of those things is flexibility in the streetscape, which we'll be talking about tonight. Flexibility in the streetscape that can truly focus on that pedestrian environment. Secondly, what these garages do is they leverage private investment for redevelopment throughout Aggieville. And we've already seen a pretty good example of this at 12th and Blument. The hotel that will begin construction expected next year. With this plan of a garage, we were able to leverage this multimillion-dollar project that will put tens of thousands of visitors within the district on a yearly basis. And this hotel will inject several million dollars into the value of the TIF of the district, which we can use to fund these improvements and all these wonderful things that we want to do. In this plan, this process can be replicated. And the plan does just that. Generally, the plan divides Aggieville into three sub-district areas that are pretty unique in character. The Blument Anderson Corridor is planned as the architectural gateway to Aggieville. It calls for buildings up to five stories tall containing apartments, offices, ground floor, commercial uses, and essentially transmutes the highway and strip commercial character of this corridor into a dense urban boulevard. We've already seen this transformation take place in certain areas of that corridor. We've already seen this transformation take place in certain areas of that corridor. The historic core of Aggieville is envisioned as the enlivened heart of the district. In this area, preserving the iconic buildings and the local shopping district feel along Moro Street in North Manhattan is a top priority. Most of the improvements in this area are focused on the streetscape and enhancing the pedestrian environment of the area that would in turn draw the full potential of the local restaurants and nightlife out of that district. Lastly, we have the Laramie Corridor, which is envisioned similar to the Blument and Anderson Corridor as an urban area with strip centers and auto-oriented uses that are redeveloped into more dense pedestrian-oriented, commercial core-type uses. Buildings would be up to five stories tall, which would essentially extend the impression of the historic core of the district into this area. And to drive home the point even more, the Aggieville Community Vision, this is a plan that was a pretty extensive effort with unprecedented community input, unprecedented community support. It was adopted by the City Commission in 2017 as the policy direction for Aggieville for the next decade and into the future. Tonight is just a small part of this vision, but I believe it critically hinges on how we move forward tonight. The projects, including the garage, the streetscape, and the TIF District, will be the catalyst for seeing this vision come to fruition. And we've got a short video that was released after the adoption of the plan back in 2017 that acts as more of a visual to this plan that I will play for you. And after that, Mark will come up and speak.
Aggieville is a special place in our community where local businesses thrive and Manhattan residents eat, shop, and relax. Over the past year, we've been working on the Aggieville Community Vision Plan, a city and community-driven initiative to establish and implement a vision for Aggieville's future. Through research, stakeholder meetings, and input from thousands of Manhattan residents, students, visitors, and K-State alumni, we've developed a plan that includes a variety of public improvements and policy changes that will guide Aggieville's development in the years to come. The Blument-Anderson Corridor is envisioned as a walkable urban area, a distinct and identifiable gateway to Aggieville. Buildings up to five stories tall on both sides of the street will someday line the corridor and contain apartments, offices, and ground-floor shops and restaurants along the sidewalk. With parking lots and garages behind the buildings and the elimination of driveway entrances on the street, Blument-Anderson will become a safer and more enjoyable walking environment. Sidewalk enhancements include landscaping, wider sidewalks, lighting, and outdoor seating areas to enhance that experience. Triangle Park is also a crucial gateway space in Aggieville. An enhanced design would include facilities and landscaping elements that would draw people to it and strengthen its identity and usability. Like the Blument-Anderson Corridor, the Laramie Corridor is envisioned as a redeveloped, walkable urban area with buildings up to five stories tall with a range of uses including apartments, offices, and ground-floor stores and restaurants along the sidewalk. Placing parking lots and garages behind the buildings will extend the feel and character of Aggieville into this area. Public parking structures located on the east and west ends of Aggieville would free up land currently used for surface parking. This would increase the number of parking spaces to support the new and existing businesses and housing throughout the district. Nearly all of Aggieville would be less than a two-minute walk from either of these garage locations. By handling some of the parking demand in Aggieville, these structures can make the rethinking of on-street parking on Moro Street possible. Unlike the two outer corridors, preserving the iconic buildings and small shopping district feel along Moro is a high priority. The community can build on those characteristics through sidewalk enhancements and amenities such as wider walkways, public seating, outdoor dining, bike racks, lighting, waste bins, landscaping, and trees. Moro could also be regularly closed to vehicular traffic during nights and weekends. These improvements would create a safe, comfortable, and attractive pedestrian environment that would support the unique restaurants, stores, and nightlife in the district. The Aggieville Community Vision calls for a unified urban design and broader mix of commercial uses to serve residents in the Aggieville District and surrounding neighborhoods in the greater community. It puts the pedestrian first, focusing on a unique sense of place and amenities by incorporating expanded and enhanced sidewalks, beautification, and increased safety and security. The plan also takes advantage of underutilized areas outside the district core by adding parking and housing opportunities. This redevelopment will contribute to the look, feel, and vitality of Aggieville.
There's two of them in there. There we go.
Hello, Mark Bashamp with Olson, the mayor commissioners. We're here to give, can give you a status update, and then we're also going to be talking about the plan refinement and the parking garage overview and some, and the overall costs. Where we've been since the work session that we were at here a month and a half ago, we met with the steering committee, and when we met with you, we had three options that we went through that were really big, big, broad options, and now we've taken that down and some plan refinements that we're going to go through tonight. Went through that with the steering committee, and then I've also met with the ABA a couple times since then at different times to talk about where we're at in this process. So first of all, we're going to go ahead and go through and the plan refinements, really take this down and to where you could really see what is going to happen with different areas within Aggieville. And Ken's going to go through that, and then I'll come back up and talk about the garage.
Thanks, Mark. Ken Boone with Ochsner-Hare-Hare, the Olson Studio. It's nice to see everybody again. I promise I will be more brief than we were last time. So what I want to go through is the refinement on the streetscape types that you saw before, but I want to concentrate on the sections. I think the sections are a little bit easier for people to understand. And we're going to start with Moro, which are the type-one streets. We've got several types that are listed in the report, and they're kind of grouped by where they're located and the type that they're reflective of. So on Moro, as you recall, we had multiple opportunities to modify Moro. There are some fixed parameters on Moro. We've got 60-foot from building face to building face, so we have choices to make. How much room do we want to reserve for pedestrians? How much room do we want to reserve for landscape, amenities, et cetera? And how much room do we want to have for vehicles for drive and for parking? And that's really what all of these concepts look at, is how do you move and shift and modify that to make it fit for what Aggieville wants to be? And there's, and there's many options here. This one is the single-side parallel parking with a single driveline with amenities on both sides, and then a 12-foot walk in front of the storefronts. And so you have enough room on either side to put landscape in, to put trees in, and to have some bench and other amenity spaces. They're not overly generous, but they're certainly large enough to be able to grow material. You've got lighting, you've got other things that can occur in that space. This is what that looks like in plan. Plan is difficult for a lot of people, so that's why we wanted to focus on the section. So you'll see in the, in the upper left-hand corner, that's really where this zone, this 1-1 would apply. 1-1B is another approach. It's an asymmetrical approach that says, what happens if we put all of the amenity on one side? And we get this 18-foot of zone with which we can really play with, have outdoor seating, have outdoor amenities, have trellises, have lighting, have some really fun opportunities to deal with. So what we're trying to show you is there is a lot of opportunity here to create a really great streetscape. We don't have to decide what the report does. It gives you a lot of options to understand that when we're going down to final design, you have a lot of options that you're going to have to work your way through. And that's what that might look like in plan. And here's, here's another option that was explored through the entire process. What happens if we have one driveline, we keep the angled parking? What happens to the pedestrian sidewalk space in the amenity zones? Well, angled parking is, takes up a lot of room. It sort of offsets the center line like it does now, and we have a five-foot zone for trees and landscape and amenities. It's not very big, but it is a commercial streetscape, and five feet can be, in some places, very typical to have that zone. It would be the minimum that you could have to really support landscape and actually street trees. And there it is in plan. I would tell you that one of the things that this allows us to do with angled parking, it allows you to do actually backend parking, which some districts have gone to because it's a must-savor, much safer option when people are pulling out, and it actually reduces the amount of time that people are waiting for other parking to occur as well. And then we have the, the next one, which is a driveline down the center, two parallel parking on either side, and then again back to that five-foot amenity zone with 10-foot of sidewalk on either side. So your sidewalk area grows by just about a half a foot in the ones where we're at 10-foot, because existing it's nine and a half, but you get that, you get that amenity zone, street tree area that you didn't have before. You get that by removing the angled parking and making it parallel. And then there are the other things that we talked about. We talked about this opportunity for a piece of 12th Street to turn into really a pedestrian mall, a really pedestrian-focused amenity that doesn't occur anywhere, that's large enough to be able to facilitate outdoor seating and outdoor events and other things that are programmable. Programming these spaces is key to drive people into these spaces and keep them active. And so this is the, the plan for what that might, the revised plan or refined plan for what that might be. And this, this, this looks at a one-piece or a one-block mall itself. And again, we've talked through some of this. This mall concept keeps the, keeps the alleys open, it keeps the, both Moro, it keeps Moro open as well, and it just shuts off the block in between, and you would, you would have fire access and other stuff through there as, as needed, but you could program that space in between. And then we get into North 12th Street at either end, from Blument and from Fremont, and where you would have two drivelines, parallel parking both sides. You'd have, again, the five-foot amenity zone, but you'd have a five-foot walk in trying to fit all of those pieces in together. And so you can see in the map in the upper left where those, where those zones were occur, and then where we, we would have bumpouts where we could add additional landscape and, et cetera, to add some additional green. And we get to Laramie, and the Laramie, again, are very similar to the last one you saw where we've got two lanes, parallel parking both sides, five-foot amenity zone, five-foot sidewalk, and that would be Laramie from North Manhattan to 11th. And then the section of Laramie that is to the south of, of the garage location, from 14th to North Manhattan, would have a center turn lane so that you could stack and get in and out of the garage, and then you'd have a driveline either way, you'd have an amenity zone again, and then you'd have sidewalk there as well. One thing I want to, I want to mention on these, you know, you see where the ability, or if we think about this on how we spend our resources in this plan, the resources are focused in on where we want to draw people, where the people are going to most be. That's focused mostly on Moro and around 12th, and at the, at the ends and on North Manhattan. As you sort of move away from that epicenter, you start focusing your resources a little bit differently. So what you're starting to see is you're, you're putting resources into the corners, you're putting resources into the, having street trees, but you're not saying, we're going to spread this out over everything. We're going to put the dollars and the resources where, you know, it's going to get the most bang for the buck and where the focus needs to be in these areas that have lighter traffic loads, less people walking through them and their pass-through. They're not sort of, let's stop and pause and linger. You would spend less resources. And so as we, as we move to the perimeters and we have our landscape zone, our street trees, and our sidewalks, you start to see what that means. And you have, you have a very nice sidewalk that allows you to make sure you have connectivity and accessibility, but you spend, if you're going to spend resources, we spend them on the, the corners and the crosswalks and the areas where people are going to interact, and then they pass through to the next zone, and, and the intensity of that increases as you get closer to the heart of Aggieville. And then, and then the alleys, we think the alleys can be used for more than just deliveries and, and trash and, and collection of grease. And so we really think that this is a, this is an important point that, that the ABA, the city, the providers, and the, and the, and the owners need to get together, and they need to put a plan together to look at a district-wide solution for handling trash, for handling grease, and enabling these alleys for the two or three hours that they're not being, or that they're being used for service, that that doesn't dominate the character of what, the potential of what Aggieville can be in, in those two alleys, because we have so much parking, we have so many people that travel through them. We think that there's an opportunity there to enhance them or at least bring them to a base level where they're pleasant to go through, they're well-lit, they feel safe, and we've added a basic level of, of some amenity, like some string lights or some really fun creative stuff that's happening now by tenants that you've all seen in the alleyways, and we think the alleyways are a really sort of unlocked jewel right now that if, if done right, could really contribute to the quality of Aggieville. And there's a diagrammatic view of that. So these don't mean anything, they don't mean that that's where they, they belong. It's diagrammatic. What it means is we have to get to the point where we can do consolidated so that we can better serve the customers and we can better serve the visitors that are going to Aggieville. And then there's some monumentation things here as well, just an overview of that. It's really important that Aggieville be seen as a district. You have gateways and thresholds that are already there that really have gone unmarked for a very long time. And as you think about that first impression and welcoming people in when they come to spend their dollars in your community, you want that to be a really great, pleasant experience. And we think there's opportunity to reinforce Aggieville as a place, as a district, as a terrific place to come and be, and one of the layers of that information is through the way you handle gateways and monuments and branding and science. So we think that's an important part of the overall final plan here when it's developed on the ground.
Just to touch a little bit on what Ken had mentioned, all those different types that you had looked at, I, I think it was treated as like a playbook. You're going to be able to, at final design, when, when that comes about in the future, being able to sit down and maybe take bits and pieces of one and two and three and combine what everybody wants to do. This is just a playbook of what can be done, the options, and, and there could be different items that will, that could be put together as well. So this is some great concepts that were pulled together and a great choice to choose from. I'm just going to touch, I know last time we touched on parking, and I just wanted to do like a, just a recap of, of the parking. Existing parking in the district's around 589 stalls, and I've always used in the report, all my presentations, is a new parking garage at 550. It could be plus or minus that, but I'm going to use 550 throughout the report. That's a gain. Your hotel parking lot that'll start next year, that is going to take away 49 stalls. That's a loss. The rally house, which is the new garage area, is a loss of 79 stalls. Laramie in, in front of the, of the new garage, the street when it goes from, to a three-lane section, you're going to lose going to lose nine there. And let's say if option one, one-way parallel is chosen, you're going to lose 54 stalls on Moro. 12th Street option, which is the partial mall between Moro and Laramie, will lose 25 stalls. So your overall stalls in the district is 923. That's a net gain of 334 stalls. You're losing around 220 in the total there, but your net gain of 334. So let's look at it the other way, as if, let's say we don't build the garage, and you take out the 550, your 79 would stay, and you would still lose around 150 stalls if you keep with this same concept. So I wanted just to give a breakdown as to what this garage does as far as impacts to the district. It allows you to look at these different types that have been looked at for the district and be able to redevelop Aggieville. The opinion of probable cost has really not changed much, except for the parking garage. And what we did on that is, the parking garage, we'd always had shown the higher number. And so what we did is we looked at a lower number and essentially created the range. That's based on option two in the study, and that's for 599 stalls. So that's the range, and it depends on how it's constructed and how much that's going to cost. So that's the reason we're putting a range in there, because there can be some different costs in that garage. Electrical, Westar, and also we're treating there with the other utilities and the public Wi-Fi. What I mean by that is getting the infrastructure in, that's not providing the service, that's the infrastructure. That's a conduit, it's going in the ground, and getting them placed, going up the poles or wherever it's going to be and wherever it's designed in the future. And none of this has changed, that's all the different types. The city utilities and streets, that's your water, sewer, storm within the district, and then your different types of your pavement, brick, and so forth determines the level of what those costs are. And so you're looking at about 10 and a half to 13 million for the road streets, streetscapes and the amenities in the district. So the summary in the costs, they're again taking those same numbers, is between 23 and a half and $30 million in that range. By changing the parking garage, we're able to lower that, the lower threshold range. So with that, ask for any questions.
Yeah, I have a few questions. You know, it's obvious we need to move along on this, we've come so far. Price is always the daunting part of it, regardless of which plans we go with as far as the amenities. I see a lot of them with lots of trees and lots of foliage. I know when we have it downtown, we don't think about the operational cost of maintenance of all of those things. So has that been figured into the options, or is this just strictly for...
Strictly for construction.
Okay, strictly for construction, so not so much operational cost. So I need to, I think we need to look at that. When we look at, it seems like there's so many trees, I don't know what types of trees or whatever it is, but I do know with the experience we've had with downtown, that's been a constant on how to manage the cleanup, trimming, lighting, the flowers that might go in or whatever might happen. So I would like to have a cost estimate of some kind from that. I think, I'm not bound to any of the plans for one, two, and three. I think I'm flexible with either way that the commission decides to go, just mainly the maintenance cost of the amenities is what I'm concerned about. I think the traffic flow, the ideas that are given there are workable. I think the community would adapt to any one of them. I don't see that as being a problem. The garage is the one I have several concerns about. I'm not a big fan of garages, I think people pretty much know that. So we have, you know, the, Kansas State University has that massive garage by the Union. How many stalls does that have? You may have told me before, but do you know what the capacity is?
I think Jason has said that before. 1,200? Twelve, yeah.
1,214? Okay, so we're thinking about half, a little less than half for that. I'm just thinking about the size. What I don't want is a garage that's so much more daunting than any other fixture or any other building that's in Aggieville. So the hotel is going to be pretty huge. Do you see the garage being about the same size as that hotel coming in?
The concepts that we've shown in the past have been a five-story garage.
For this one. So I know there is some room for how...
There's options.
Number of stalls.
Right, right. And we're bound by what the city owns on that lot, so we can only put so many stalls on that lot. The only way to gain more is to add a sixth floor, and I don't know if there's, I don't know if that's palatable.
I don't want to add more.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only way that we can add more, but what the options have shown has been five.
Right. And even though we're going to be losing a lot of the parking spaces that you've demonstrated, when you go to K-State, you also have to pay like a buck fifty or something an hour. So that's also something we need to look at. I know those are conversations we've had. The $800,000 from the Marriott that's coming in is only going to pay pennies to the 12 million we're talking about. And so I wanted to know, do you have an idea what you see as somebody going into Aggieville might pay for an hour? Do we have any of those?
We have not. That will be whenever the garage is, decide to move forward with the garage, a rate study would be done on that. We've always, I've always had this discussion with Aggieville. It can't be free, otherwise you're going to have students and faculty parking there all day long. So there has to be some charge, and that charge, we've always been tossing around, is a charge from eight to five with also a grace period for lunch, hour, hour and a half, or whatever, or a validation, but then possibly after five o'clock to whenever it goes for free to entice people to come down and play, and visit Aggieville. How does that work in the revenue stream? I don't know.
Yeah, that's something I'm concerned about, because Commissioner McKee earlier today during our briefing session talked about how many more people are utilizing Adibus or using public transportation. And if we have it too high, that might be the component that people are going to go to, because it offsets some of whatever fees we might put on this. So those are some numbers I'm looking at. I'm not stuck on, I know we're going to have a parking garage. That's going to happen whether I like for that to happen or not. Like I said, I don't like parking garages a whole lot, but I also don't want it to be the dominating feature in Aggieville. I think if you're trying to put up trees and make it look refreshing and wonderful, a parking garage kind of takes it away from all of that, unless you can make a parking garage look really nice at the same time with murals or something, I don't know how that would look. The cost is something, the options, I'm not...
I just might say that all the scenarios of the garages have a facade on the front of the garage to not make it look like a garage, and we've always talked about that. What that design is will be vetted out whenever that process starts. And, I mean, I visioned something that's going to blend into Aggieville. I mean, I think the Bluemont Hotel did an excellent job blending in.
Yeah. So are we thinking office spaces in this garage also? I forgot if you had mentioned that already.
It's allocated in the parking numbers that, in the different scenarios, that there's commercial space allocated that could go parking back in. It just depends on which option that comes back for design.
The only thing that I'm really happy about is the public Wi-Fi. That thing, that's something I think we absolutely must have, that's going to be like a utility in the future, like water, electricity, whatever it might be. If you have Aggieville and you want people to come there, small businesses or consumers of any kind, I think that's something I would not take off the table as the Wi-Fi for the 3 million or 4 million that we're thinking about. Everything else I'm not totally bound to, but I would like to look at maintenance costs and operational costs as we move forward on some of these designs, concepts.
Just a question, I have some other comments, but a question, the Westar quote really speaks to above-ground utilities rather than below ground? Or some of both?
Well, how do I answer this? We've got about three different options for Westar. And what you're seeing there is a lot of it being buried, which is the most expensive option.
Absolutely.
More than likely, it will have to be a combo of some above and some below, mainly because of the electrical service, and I don't want to get into weeds, mainly because the way the electrical service is provided in the Aggieville area. It's all aerial, we can't go underground without a lot of expense by the Aggieville businesses.
Does this proposal envision tearing up the alleys, tearing up the streets, so that we would have an opportunity for underground utilities?
Every, every street, I'll just say Moro, 12th, from face of building to face of building will be torn up.
And will, and new city services also.
New city water, new city sewer. Storm sewer will be enhanced, and then that gives you the opportunity to bury the conduits for the Wi-Fi and so forth. And then if other utilities such as the gas company needs to update their lines, that gives them an opportunity to have that all done before you put the new pavement back on top.
Is it possible, I saw on your drawings, is it possible to put that, those utilities in the section under that we'll be redoing that is more labeled as an amenity, like if we use that eight or 10-foot wide version? Amenity zone planting bed is 18 feet. If we were to select that, and I'm not saying one necessarily, but could we put the utilities there so that we don't have to dig up the streets over the years?
Every, every location is possible. It depends on which streetscape you choose. It's an option to put that in a corridor, and I'd be looking at comments from Brian and Public Works to how that would work.
We did that downtown, and we did have some issues with just running out of physical space with putting trees and plants and stuff in. When that corridor is in that green area, when you go to plant and replant over the years, you run into a lot of conduits. So as Mark said, there's give and take which, where you want to be inside that corridor. The advantage of being out under the pavement is you're protected, you know, there's nothing that's ever going to be over the top of that. The disadvantage is you have to cut the street if you have to ever get to it.
Thanks.
Just to make sure I understand, because it wasn't in the presentation, we landed, this vision calls for Little Moro becoming pedestrian, correct?
There is no selected plan on this, in this plan that you have, we're not specifying what's what. You've got...
But the option to shut it down is in this plan, correct?
Let me rephrase your question.
Okay.
Okay?
Please.
There is an option to temporarily close Moro, 12th, Little Moro with pop-up ballards as to whenever the Aggieville Association chooses to close for activities or festivals. To permanently close the street, say Little Moro, is one of the options shown in the Triangle Park Plan.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, it's still an option, would have to be vetted out.
We just discussed that last time.
Yes.
And it just wasn't in this presentation, so I wanted to make sure that option was still at least an option.
It's still in here.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, that's all I needed, thank you.
Maybe at this point, it's a good idea to hear from the public, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
So any public comment on this item, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Linda Cook. I'm Director of Community Relations and Chief of Staff at Kansas State University, and I'm here just to express the university leadership's support of revitalizing Aggieville. For us, it's very important as a, that was a quick five minutes. Go. For us, it's very important.
That's Jason's heart rate.
With the proximity of the Aggieville District so close to the university, it is a source of, you know, of interest to the university as we try to attract more students and more faculty at the university, to have the kind of environment around the university where people can go and shop and engage in activities and have an atmosphere that feels safe and is clean and offers these type of pedestrian malls or the streetscapes that allow them to feel part of the community is very important from a recruiting standpoint, not only from the faculty and for staff, but also for our alumni. We are very active in helping to find and work with the alumni and students and faculty and staff in providing feedback. I've been involved in the steering committee and have taken feedback back to our leadership staff about what was being proposed. Overall, we're very supportive of any one of these concepts. We recognize, you know, money is a concern, but just the overall revitalization of Aggieville, cleaning things up, making it more engaging for people to come down there from all ages, but particularly from the student aspect, that's where we see a heavy emphasis of students having a place where they can go and enjoy it and have the types of amenities they may have in their own home communities. So as they come to campus and look for the university they want to go to, they have a lot of, we have a lot of competition. What's close to that university is very important to them, so we're very supportive of any one of these options and how it's being addressed. And if you have any questions for us, we're here to help entertain those questions as well, but we're very supportive.
Thank you, appreciate it. You can go ahead, Matt, if you want.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening Commissioners. My name is Matt Crocker, I live at 1001 Mill Valley Circle. I stand before you tonight in my capacity as Chair of the Manhattan Area Chamber Board. And on two occasions over the last 12 months, the Chamber Board has had the opportunity to review the Aggieville Community Vision Plan that has been adopted by this commission. I'm pleased to state that in each case, the Board unanimously took formal action to support the vision as we feel it creates a bold vision for the area and the region at large. The vision that has been laid out for Aggieville is similar to what the Chamber has seen in other peer and more importantly, competing communities that the Chamber has visited on our inter-region visits over the past few years. Those cities include Ames, Iowa, Columbia, Missouri, Fayetteville, Arkansas, and Lincoln, Nebraska, which we plan to visit in 2019. In addition to this, we see the vision for Aggieville as supportive of many of the goals under Region Reimagined, which you have very graciously supported with your time and funds. And those goals include attracting, as Linda mentioned, attracting and retaining KSU students, retaining and attracting a millennial workforce, and the development of innovation districts as well as many others. The Chamber ultimately views Aggieville as one of the keystone assets of this community and region. To begin this bold vision, we must first invest in the foundation. In this case, the foundation is the supportive infrastructure that you've heard about tonight, including parking, utilities, streetscapes, and transportation that is required to make this area a vibrant part of the community and region a reality. So tonight, the Chamber asks that as we make decisions, as decisions are made, some of which we understand will be controversial about Aggieville, that the commission and the community at large keep in mind the Community Vision Plan as the overarching document that should drive our decisions tonight and in the future. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hello, Ryan Graham Hall, I'm the President of the Aggieville Business Association, 1127 Morrow. I want to, we sent an email out to you guys, hopefully you all got it. The Aggieville Business Association supports this plan. And one thing that's probably never happened, as long, I've been down there almost 20 years, we have 95% of the businesses down there that support this. I think if anybody says anything that they're very excited about is the possibility of getting a parking garage. This is something that a lot of us have been waiting on for a long time. The infrastructure, as we all know, we have some issues. We think that this is going to help fix all these problems. Aggieville is regarded as a jewel in Manhattan, as the heart, as the heart of Manhattan, and we strongly believe that. We're ready for this to start and things to get done. I think the parking garage and all this is going to do great things for Aggieville, and it's going to help with a lot of things. Do you guys have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Brennan Walter, I'm a resident of the Aggieville neighborhood, I live- Morrow and Juliette. And as a resident of the neighborhood, I was really excited to be a part of the planning process. I went to the big community meeting at City Park and I was really excited by all the energy and all of the new development that's going into the Aggieville Zone. It would make me really proud to have this neighborhood be, be my neighborhood, so I hope that a lot of these zoning changes go through. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is that I use the district as a transportation corridor when I'm going to class. I know a lot of people do as well. And one of the things that I was concerned about, and I made this remark to the planners at the, at the meeting and to the consultants, is that there were not any provision for bicycle lanes. We have a lot of investment in our Bicycle Advisory Board, and I, I hope that the Master Plan Committee would have been consulted or somebody with the bicycling community would have been consulted about how we're moving not just cars through this district and pedestrians along the central core. I know that the plan that was presented for Laramie Street called for three traffic lanes, that center turn lane and two drive lanes, but only four-foot sidewalks, so, I mean, not everyone in the future is going to be only driving to this neighborhood. A lot of us live around the community, and when you densify this core, there's going to be a lot more people that are living in the community too. They're going to want more than four-foot sidewalks. So, I feel like in the future, obviously, these pedestrian, these, like you said, we're going to have that parking garage there. More people are going to be driving to Aggieville, but more people are also going to be walking and cycling through the district too, and I think that those people ought to be given the same considerations. Probably not $12 million worth of investment, but a cycle lane, I think, is something that we should at least look at and have a consideration for, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Derek Richards, I am a business owner in this town. I'm the broker and owner of Alliance Realty in Town. I'm also here to represent a cowork space that I'm also an owner of. It's called The Fellow, you might not be familiar, but a cowork space is just kind of a gym membership for the businessman. And a little bit about us is, you know, in our 3,800 square feet that we operate out of right now, we, we have about 49 companies and 120 employees that work out of our space. Total revenue of those companies this last year was $2 million. The reason why I say that is because I support the vision here. I'm sorry, 321 North 14th Street, I live about 100 yards that way, so, Aggieville is also near and dear to my family. And, so yeah, so we're just here, the community, the entrepreneurial community that we have at The Fellow, we're here to support this vision. I know you're going to be making a lot of decisions about, about what it's going to feel and look like, but what I hope, I'm from Manhattan, I grew up here, what I hope is that there could be a vibrant business community in this district. And I know that's really been part of the vision, and it's something that really excites us as a group. We are located on Westport Drive in the middle of town, we enjoy where we, where we operate, but we know this idea of work, play, and live is possible in this district. And the right building and the right space could bring a lot more, we're capped out of space. We have enough, we have enough companies in our 4,000 square feet. And we, we think that this entrepreneurial spirit that we have with, with the space that we operate right now, if it was located in this district, we, we could be an advantage to Manhattan. Not only just being able to grow the, the small companies that are, that are joining us, definitely some tech companies, some innovation companies, but be partners with K-State as well, just to be closer, it'd be fantastic. So, yeah, we support the vision and we just wanted to make a representation today, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Derek, I have a question.
Yeah.
How important is it to an entrepreneurial organization like yours to have that free Wi-Fi in the Aggieville area?
I think the most important thing is going to be-
How fast?
Well, how, how, I think it's going to be a complete culture shift with, with our community talking about parking and walking. But I think we love to embrace it, I think we think outside the box anyways. So, this idea of even biking to work and even walking a few blocks to get to work is something that I think would, would be extremely positive for, for this lifestyle.
I just wondered, before we afford the, the Wi-Fi feature, I just wanted to run it by somebody that's a creative thinker.
I'm not the tech guy in my space.
You're okay.
So, we do have guys-
You're the entrepreneurial leader.
Yeah, but I mean, if you go to any coffee shop in Aggieville, you'll understand how important Wi-Fi is, so.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
That's my two cents.
I just found your reaction, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Good evening Commissioners and Mayor, my name is Lindsay Logan, I'm located at 1307 Points Avenue. I'm a planning student at Kansas State. I too am in favor of the Aggieville Vision Plan. I am however concerned about the parking garages. I think if Manhattan is moving towards a more walkable, active transportation community, I don't think parking garages promote that. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understood, there are 589 existing spots, and if you're adding 923 new spots, that's only 334 spots gained. And if you do the math, that's a considerable amount of money per spot. I would suggest parking at City Park or one of the surrounding areas to walk to Aggieville. I think that promotes a healthy lifestyle and is not a bad request. So, just wanted to voice my concerns about the parking garages. I think the renderings for the development are beautiful, and I think that it is a wonderful plan to execute. I am though concerned, concerned about the parking garages, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and come back to Commissioner's comment, any further comment?
I'll start. So, when I think about this plan, I really think about the Aggieville Vision as step A, and this is step B. And it's a good start, but we still have C through Z to do, right? A parking garage and adding trees won't make Aggieville the space that we all want it to be. And so, as we, as we go through this, first I just want to say, I, I'm in favor of the, the first parking garage by Rowley House, but one of the things that's really, for lack of a better term, I, I don't like how we, throughout this plan, have made decisions, planning decisions, that have been totally driven by parking and vehicle throughput. Every, every decision we've made up till this point has been driven by those two things, and that's concerning for me as well. I lived, I had the privilege of living in Madrid, Spain, and Madrid is very different, obviously, than Manhattan, Kansas, right? But their metro, their, their biggest areas where people congregated, you had to walk into them. There were not cars that drove into those areas, and there were places where people dined outside and congregated, and it was amazing. And cities like Madrid have been eliminating cars from whole swaths of their cities, and society has not broken down. Somehow, they figured out how to do it, and they focused on how do we create a quality place that people want to come to? Not how, how can we make sure that that person could park 10 feet away from my storefront? So, while I am supportive of the first parking garage, I want to be cautious as we continue to go into this plan allowing parking and transportation to drive every single decision that we've made, because up till this point, that's what's happened. The next thing, and I just want to reiterate it because I got more feedback after our last meeting, I am still somewhat disappointed that Morrow, closing down Morrow was one of the most highly, was the majority favored idea in the plan. And while I understand the hurdles that we'd have to overcome to do something like that, the fact that that idea was not even a concept presented to the Commission was something that I found very disappointing, and a lot of people who gave feedback to this plan found very disappointing. I know that there was a community process that eliminated that portion of the plan, but the perception was that that was eliminated before the public got input. And perception is reality in this business, and I, it's hard for me to convince those people to participate in public input again when they feel like the one time they did it, the thing that they suggested the most of didn't come out. The other thing I got a lot of feedback on was the idea and the concept of the alleys not really being addressed. I'm glad that you discussed that a little bit more tonight. That was another thing that people highly voted for, was improving those alleys. And right now, there's really not a concept there, and that's something that I want to see a real focus on because it's a missed opportunity. Every time I go to Aggieville, I probably walk in the alleys more than I actually do on Morrow to get to the places that I'm going. And we have such large missed opportunities there, and it'd be an incredible disappointment if we didn't do something in the next decade because of trash service. That would just be an absolute disappointment, like we can send a man to the moon, we can figure out how to do trash service in Aggieville so that we can provide a unique space for people to come, that can't delay this project. The last thing that I just want to talk about is we, we give lip service. I want to make sure we just don't give lip service to the concept of providing, getting more housing and office space down in Aggieville. Matt alluded to a thing called Innovation Districts that I've been able to look in over the last couple of weeks. And cities have used districts like Aggieville to not only be economic anchors for their cities, but to be really melting pots of this entrepreneurial spirit, a place where young people want to live and start businesses. And while this plan is the start of that, I want to make sure that when we, when we do C through Z, the rest of these plans, that we don't just give lip service to those concepts. How can we work with the Chamber, how can we work with Region Reimagined to make those things actually happen? So, while I think this is a good start, if I'm being frank with you, it's not quite bold enough for my taste. So, I want to keep pushing on this because we have one shot at this. And I think that we can do really good, incredible things here, we just have to keep focused and we have to think bigger than just parking and how do we get cars to Aggieville? How do we get people to Aggieville to live, work, and play? That's what I want us to be focused on.
Well, I was on the Steering Committee, so I've seen this numerous times, and I thought the Steering Committee did a pretty good job of narrowing it. And I think this plan that you presented, you know, we started with something that wide, and now we've got it about that wide, and that was the intent, is to have a playbook where people could pick and we could refine this. The other thing is, I, I thought there was plenty of public input, and you know, from my perspective, while there's a lot of people have ideas about Aggieville, in my mind, the main focus has got to be those 95% of business owners that were mentioned that support this plan. They own the property, they're running the business, and we got to stay focused on what they want, not necessarily what the majority of the population thinks would be nice, because it's their money and it's their property taxes. And so, I think we're headed in the right direction, and we'll refine it as it goes along. And of course, this isn't going to be done with a wave of a wand where we tear down Aggieville and rebuild it. It's going to be, you know, phased in, I think we talked about maybe the 12th Street idea, which is the pedestrian mall which evolved from the idea of Morrow being closed, might happen first because hotels being built there. And then probably the parking garage, and then we'll look at other things. So, it's going to, it's going to take a while to make this happen, but I think we're doing a pretty good job now on step two, we'll go on step three later.
I, when I was thinking about this, I thought about how our community has grown over, let's say, the last 20 years or 30 years. Aggieville has stayed the same size. And so, we're now, it's time for us to update Aggieville. And it's hard to know where, where to stop. But there are boundaries, we have, it's kind of locked in, except for the east side. And so, I, I do have some thoughts. I, I want to be sure, I just want to always, at every meeting I go to, I've been on the Steering Committee also. I have been an advocate of retaining City Park as a community-level park and not allowing it to become the parking space, the parking lot for Aggieville. That's not what it is. And it means that we have to have a solution for that condensed parking. And, and so, I ultimately am supporting the parking garage. I, I'm- I want to include, the other thing is, as I look at the map, sometimes I don't see all of the Aggieville area in it. And I want all of Aggieville in it, so that when some of those properties that are not really looked at today as being contributing to this, maybe they're a house now and 10 years they'll be gone, or maybe it's an apartment building now, and it will change. And we, you've talked about the value of land in Aggieville, and I believe that it will turn over. And I, I think the entire of Aggieville, from Fremont to Blumenton and 11th to 14th, and I'm even willing to talk about east of 11th. I haven't, I don't have one idea what I'm talking about, but that's the only way I can see that Aggieville could grow. And those are not very refined-looking homes there anymore. They've been pretty used up, I guess I would say. I would like, and I haven't heard that this evening, but I, I believe that design guidelines are important so that we don't have orange buildings in the middle of a block. And that if Morrow were to develop east of 11th, that it wouldn't look like some of the town. It would need to look like part of A, be part, extend the, the look in the part of Aggieville. And I don't know who I'm talking about that might own property east there, but I'm just saying. I'd like to make Aggieville aesthetically pleasing, a place for millennials and for former students who want to revisit their good times in Aggieville. And, but I, I want to be sure that we also have better, I just would like to see more retail. And I have heard several members on the Steering Committee talk about how difficult it has, it is and has been to support and sustain retail in Aggieville. But it's, it's so important that we try so that it is not just a bar district. So, I don't know, I would personally like to, you know, see a small grocery store and small pharmacy of some kind. We have to have those services, we're talking about not so much in Aggieville itself, because we're thinking of it as commercial, but the area around it, we're talking about higher density and, and to the east of campus. If that really happens, then we're going to need those kinds of services for, we have beauty shops and we have a barber, but we, there are certain things in Aggieville that we don't, we may have had in the past, and we need, will need once we grow the population there. I would really like no more, just intrusions with, that take up big pieces of land, like a hotel. Or a, even parking garages. We're cutting out some Aggieville space when we do that. So, I'd like for us to, we may have to do some of these things, but I don't want it to be a pattern that continues on into the future. It needs, we need to keep Aggieville as an environment, I think Linda called it, yeah, something special. In order to accomplish the above, I think it's necessary to support the parking garage. And if it's small, then we may need a second garage. I don't know how, I don't know how to- I don't know how, I don't know how to pick through whether we need one garage or two. So maybe time will tell that we would need the second garage, so. I'd like to enhance Triangle Park as, as a green space, though. In the materials, or somewhere, it talked about changing Triangle Park to a hardscape, and I don't know what that means. I like green space. What's a hardscape, Mark? Or, or Ken? Yeah. Does that mean paved over?
Yeah, softscape versus hardscape.
Looks like red brick, or what?
Yeah. Plazas, pedestrian areas, surface to walk on that's safe, as opposed to walking on grass. So it'd be a combination of both. It's just, it's just a component of a park.
Okay, as long as we don't hardscape it all over. I mean, I think we need a sidewalk there along wherever the sides are, where they end up being. I do support, I, I can support the softening of that little Mauro into a space that helps enlarge the Triangle Park when we need it for something, when we want a larger than just the small triangle that we have. I don't want it to be too fancy and expensive and glorious. I just want it to be basic, so that people in our community will use it. And planners have good ideas about things like that. I don't know, I, I, the thing about what's happening, what we're proposing in Aggieville to me is that the city is subsidizing some of this, with our efforts, our time, with our funding ultimately, with our utilities. I don't want to do that for residential. I believe residential should occur around Aggieville more, and that should be the developer's initiative, what, what happens around Aggieville. Without the kind of subsidization, we're, we're, you know, tearing up streets, doing special things, like we've talked about tonight, ought to be, shouldn't be what we have to do with our districts and transportation and tax increment financing and that kind of thing. I, I can support the TIF, much as I don't like saying that, and CIDs as a district. Although I believe, I mean, we're going to be putting the hotel in there, too, so they'll be getting the benefit of the TIF. But I believe that hotel would have been built anyway, without the TIF as incentive. So I want to just, I think we have to have it to make it float as a district, so I need to support it. I do support the public wifi, and I do agree that the deliveries, delivery vehicles, I believe other communities have control when deliveries are made. And I think we can get it together also, and it's going to take an effort. You know, you talked about trash and grease and deliveries, and those seem to be the three things, and I think there just need to be active committees. But I would support also some kind, so let's say that years to come, Aggieville stops paying real attention to grease. I think there needs to be something that the city would take over and start billing people, if we had to take it over. But we have a real interest in what happens in Aggieville, and we can't just let it fall apart. So the committee approach, where the city and the businesses and the Aggieville organization come together and keep talking about this. I, I know when you, we, when we develop something, it, we pay a lot of attention to it, and we solve it, and five years later, it's on automatic, 10 years later, nobody even remembers what we did in the beginning. So if, there's got to be something built in here, so we are, continue to be attentive and make sure these things happen. I don't know if the delivery vehicles need to be out by 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM, or what, what the time is, but that should be negotiated with. I don't really have an opinion on whether Mauro goes east or west. I'm going to leave that to better planners than I. I do have an interest, or a lot of, as Commissioner Reddy mentioned, there are a lot of trees. And I know in the downtown experience, those trees, you know, we plant them and they grow up, and they block all the signs of the businesses. So I'd like to try to find a solution, and maybe your recommendations, not just, we need those businesses to be visible, and not, you know, the first three years, you can see them, and then for the next five, you can't, or, you know, we need to be, we need to look after them by the tree selection process we, we make. That's about it. Thank you. I better quit.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Aggieville Infrastructure Phase Two report.
I just had a couple of comments first. I was waiting for the clock to go around. This is a terrific vision, and I appreciate the committee doing all this. The, I think you've given us a great menu. I think the task ahead of us is to put this into sequence. Something has to be done first, and as Commissioner Butler said, a lot of the heavy lifting here has got to be determined by the market. So all those business owners and building owners are going to have to come to a conclusion about, for themselves, about what's economically feasible. But we put these building blocks in place, hopefully that will help promote them to do what they need to do and, and help the whole community. So I think if, if we can do something as the next step, if we can suggest some sequencing here, to kind of see what makes sense for what we need to put in place first, and then, you know, you may have to just go on a pause. This is kind of like putting a building up and then watching where people walk to put the sidewalk in. You just, we need to see what's going to happen, and then take that next step. Because if you try to build all this at, at one time, I guarantee you to be wrong. So that's why I say the sequence is important. So thanks for the motion.
I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then we'll go into the motion part of it. I just want to say, I do appreciate everybody working on this. It's been a long time coming. I think sometimes there's this perception of, even though we're living in the same community, we're competing against each other, downtown against Aggieville, or this district against that district. If we have a thriving district in each area of, of the community, Manhattan is very successful, and that's what we're looking for. I think Fort Riley, we've, you know, the soldiers love coming to Aggieville, love visiting Manhattan, as well as the alumni, they have memories, they want to revisit, and students. I think they're going to embrace it even more, when it's, sometimes it's just an eyesore. When it looks vibrant, it makes it more easy to go to. Like I said, the garage, it's going to happen regardless, and that's probably necessary at this point. I do take, I want to take Brennan's comments into consideration, maybe the 10-feet sidewalks are a key component, if we're looking at either bicycle lanes or walking. I don't see just four or five feet for those sidewalks. I think that might be more not conducive to a healthier-looking community or transportation, or pedestrians being more mobile down there. I don't know what monumentation looks like, but that's something that I'm interested in, and we can also have one of our other advisory boards be involved in it, because we have some more funds for arts now, so that would be something that people can take advantage of, and see what they want to put up in for monuments. So that wouldn't have to be a city commission, commission decision, but there are other groups that are interested in such things. Let's see. I just don't want to see a whole lot of five-story buildings. I think the beauty of Manhattan is its culture. I would like to see something that fits into the Manhattan community culture, and not just become another urban area. So I think we need to be cognizant about the size, as Commissioner Morris was mentioning, what fits into our community. We can still have the innovative things happening around here, but fitting into our culture, kind of like when something goes into K-State campus, you make it fit into your K-State culture. Like that, I would like to make sure we're within our boundaries and keeping the values of, of Manhattan and our community members involved in that process. So other than that, I think, I think Phase Two is about where we should be going at this point. You made a motion?
Second, sorry.
Call a rule.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Okay, the next item is consider first reading ordinances modifying water and sewer rates and charges effective January 1st, 2019, and be Randy DeWitt.
Thank you, commissioners. Good to be here. So again, this is an opportunity to kind of reiterate what was discussed at the July work session, considering water and sewer rates, and also, a little bit later, we'll talk about some other ordinance updates that we're moving forward with in the pre-treatment side of things, so. So we've, we're a year into the new water rate, water and wastewater rate structures, and really, not a whole lot has changed that, that I'm going to present to you as far as what, what we recommended, both in July and, and at previous meetings with, with the cost of services study. So we're looking at 5% rate increases for both the water and the wastewater. That's, that'd be the second year of the, the three-year phasing of the new rate structures. Again, same as last time, we're looking at a water fund that's in fairly good condition, and we're meeting most of our recommended fund level requirements. And on the wastewater side, we're not, we're not meeting those, those recommended levels, and I'll give you a little bit more information as to why we think we're not meeting those levels, and, and what maybe we can do about it in the future, so. Table you've seen numerous times, really just details what those rates are going to be for those first three years of that, that three-year phasing, with the individual water charges for minimum charges, unit charges, and sewer capacity charges. So the 2019 rates are shown, and this is just for water. And the impacts to the customers for the average water, water monthly water bill, looking at average, average customer, average residential customer, is a monthly increase of $1.28, and an annual increase of approximately $15.39. So the average residential customer being somebody that uses approximately seven units of water a month. And then on the business side, we have a business average customer category, but I don't typically look at that. The average for a business customer is determined by AWWA. From our perspective, I typically look at the medium, the medium business category of 20 units a month. And so average monthly increase for the water bill would be $2.02, and annually, it's going to be $33.82. Same information on the wastewater side, showing, showing all the rates for the, the three-year phase-in, with 2019 being shown in this column.
Randy?
Yes.
For the, for the business one, you had the low, medium, and average. Is there a high on that? Did you already mention that?
I don't typically discuss it, because it's such, it's a, such a small percentage of our customer base, but...
I'm thinking about like schools or something?
Sure. Well, the university, the school district, those are, those are our highest-volume customers, some of the industries in town. They were, if you remember, when we went through the, the phase-in process, those customers actually saw a decrease in their, in their billing. So it was discussed in July that while these 5% rate increases look like they're a big impact to them, actually were, we lowered their utility bills with the first year of the phase-in, and over the next three years, we're kind of catching back up to where they were initially. So they actually benefited from that first, first year of rate structure changes, and by the time we get to the third year, they'll essentially be, I think, caught up to where they were in 2017. Same information on the impacts to the average monthly sewer bill for, for a customer. Again, I'm highlighting the average residential and the medium business category. So the average monthly bill in 2019 will increase by $1.71 for the residential, $20.51 annually. And then for the medium business, we're looking at a $3.87 increase per month, and about a $46 increase annually. Same information when you combine the water and sewer. I know the utility bills also include stormwater, but since I don't oversee that, I don't include that in my calculations, so. Again, I've highlighted those particular customers that I focus on. And just some information on how the rates have changed over the years, when you look at the combined monthly bill, highlighting the three-year phase-in, so. Again, same information I, I presented at previous meetings, showing what those average bills look like over a longer timeframe on a, on a chart. So this represents the, the lower-volume residential, average residential, and the higher residential customer, as far as their average monthly combined bill, and the three-year phase-in highlighted. Same thing with the commercial. And the last thing that we look at when we look at customer impacts, this, this data hasn't changed since we implemented the, the rate structure and went through the cost of services study, the bill affordability. So this is a combined water and sewer affordability index, showing this year, all, all the years from 2015 to 2025. Reminder that an affordability index of one is considered excellent, and so far, you know, looking into the future, we're in good condition as far as what we consider affordability. And just as a reminder, that, that takes into account the average income of the, the city versus what their average bill is, so residential.
The affordability index is really only addressing the residential side, it really doesn't address the business side, correct?
Yeah.
Is there any comparative for the business side of it?
Not that we've ever really used as far as determining customer impacts, industrial, industrial with AWWA, we typically look at that average residential customer. It's something that we can do in the future, but this is what, this is what we've used in the past, it's also what came out of the cost of services study with our, with our consultant.
Got it.
So I would, I don't know how we would quantify that with the wide variety of, of businesses, and how you would, how you would categorize that as far as revenues, or...
Maybe, don't have a huge concern about it now, but on the previous slide, I understand what we're trying to accomplish here, but obviously, that's, the business side of it starts to go up in 2025 comparatively to residential. And again, I know the foundation of what we're trying to accomplish with the plan, but I just always want to be cognizant of those things.
And keep in mind, the basis of the changes that we make were the cost, based on the cost of serve, and our, our rates are intended to be set up so that customers are paying for a service relative to the demand that they place on our utilities, so.
Totally understand.
So that, that was the theory behind it. And of course, we, we moved to a system where it's the same rate for all customers, there's no, there's no discount for a high-volume user, user. That's, it's not, it's not a recommended rate structure. But of course, the higher volume users are, they're going to stand to see a bigger impact when we raise it by 5%, 3%, whatever. So just going into some of the more critical information that I show at these presentations, the fund balance charts, because they're really indicative of the goals that we have for meeting reserves. As usual, red indicates the recommended fund balance, the blue indicates where we are now, and projected to be, showing where we were at pre-cost of services study, and what we were projected to look like as far as our fund balance. The darker dash line represents where we thought we would be, based on the consultant's recommendations. And so really, you look at the end goal... And so, really, you look at the end goal for me is in 2025, which is with the end of that 10-year modeling period, we're, we're going to achieve our reserve goals. And we'll be about, you know, hopefully around $10 million. We'll be well above that recommended level as far as this being three, three months of operating costs, costs, and one year of debt service. And this also reflects the, the loan that being made to the general fund in 2019. And also with the three-year payment starting in 2020. So, even though that causes quite a reduction in our fund balance, we should be able to, to make up for that as long as it's paid back. Again, a chart that you typically see from me, showing the revenues versus expenses, really just wanting to show that, you know, over through the out-years, we should have revenues that exceed our expenses. Again, marking that, that is a expense, expenses include that $750,000 loan to the general fund next year. So, moving over to the wastewater side, and just talking about some of the, some of the things we're seeing and maybe how it's going to impact the wastewater fund. I've mentioned before that the wastewater fund isn't performing quite as well as what we thought it would be after we went through the rate structure change. So, focusing on what the issues are, in 2018, we're projecting revenues to be $250,000 less than what we budgeted. And there's some reasons behind that. We think we, we have an understanding of why we're not meeting revenue projections, and they primarily lie in the fact that, one of the things I reiterated in the memo, and I'll reiterate now, is that sewer consumption is dropping. And every year, we track winter quarter average, which is our basis for billing all residential customers, their average water consumption from the month of December through February. And so, based on that winter quarter average, that's going to determine their sewer bill for the rest of the year, just residential. And so, over the past four years, we've seen a 10% drop in that winter quarter average for all customers. That can be attributed to low-flow fixtures, energy-efficient appliances, washing machines, et cetera, or could be awareness on the customers that they know that their annual bill is based on their water usage in those months. So, that and combined with the fact that we know that growth has slowed. In 2015, when we did the cost of services study, we were averaging about 250 new connections a year. Since then, that's dropped a lot. In 2018, we're looking at about 125 new connections. So, growth has dropped by half. The consumption by the individual residences is dropping, so you can obviously do the math and, you know, we're not going to meet projections. So, public work staff and finance staff, we've, we've done the due diligence to update our projections based on that, so we have more accurate projections moving into the future. And the unfortunate consequence of being what we think is more accurate is that if you look at the next seven years through that year 2025, we stand to be about $315,000 a year, a year short on our revenues for a total of about $2 million. This is purely based on what we were projecting, you know, two to three years ago. And so, just looking at that 8,300 units a month that we're losing, projecting that up, out over a year, and this $3.52 would be the new unit charge for 2019. Again, we're standing, we're looking at potentially up to $350,000 a year less in revenue. And that number is about what we're projecting to be short in 2019 versus sewer revenue versus what we budgeted. So, so those are the issues. When you have issues, you have to come up with solutions, so. I probably should have put this second bullet first, just to reiterate that our solution is not to deviate from the plan. We committed to a three-year phasing plan, and I think at this point, there's no sense in changing that. I think there's other means that we can go through to, to try and recoup some of those revenue losses. So, my goal over the next two years is I've identified some savings in the budget that I think we can realistically hit. And those come in the form of reductions into some of the annual maintenance that we do, some of the annual projects. And looking for cost savings with capital improvement projects as well as maybe pushing some off that might not be, that are a priority, but they can stand to be put off for a couple more years. But what I don't want to get into is, I don't want to limit doing capital projects altogether. Fortunately, the facilities that we run, we really can't afford to defer maintenance very long, so we need to continue with those. So, certainly, we'll, we'll do our best to look at cost savings over the next few years. But, like I said, I, I don't see the need to, to deviate from the current plan of, of 5% rate increases for the next two years. And one of the reasons that I'm fine with that is because I, as I stated, I'll show the fund balance chart here. The end goal for us in 2025 is to have a, a fund balance that is higher than what was, higher than is recommended. So, you can see even, even with some of the shortfalls, the green, the green area representing projected fund balance, looking at that 2025 year, we're still above the red. And ideally, we'd like to see it a little bit higher. The cost of services goal was about $9 million. And I don't, I don't see any reason why we're going to make that, but the, the green line here represents where we could be if we achieved some savings over the next few years. So, while, while we won't hit this goal, I think we'll still be above recommended levels, and I think we can improve it with cost savings over the next few years. And some of the other things that we need to consider in the future that, you know, they're, they're unknowns, but we just need to talk about them, and that's, you know, deviating from that plan in the future if next year, we need to look at more than a 5% rate increase, some of the reasons why. Three bullet points there. So, that winter quarter average, if it continues to fall, which it very well may, and if the growth continues to trend down, we might need to look at deviating from that plan. We're looking at additional salaries that are for utility support staff that are funded out of the general fund, and we're already starting the process of transitioning some of those into the utility funds, which is completely appropriate because those, like I said, those staff members are primarily in finance department with utility billing. And in 2019, or 2018, we, we transitioned one over into utilities. So, that's likely something that will continue and understandably, so. And then lastly, we need to be probably cognizant of future increases to the general fund transfer. Every year, we transfer $1.3 million from the utility funds, each from water and wastewater. I, I'm not exactly sure what is stormwater, but if those increase in the future years, again, I understand the reasons why we might need to do that because their costs are going up. Ron can probably, Ron or Bernie can give more insight on what those transfers are for, but if we are going to raise those in the future, I certainly think that's the time when we probably look at deviating from our plan. And, and there's ways that we can adjust our rate structures to account for those changes. But like I said, those are kind of the three bullet points that I list as far as why we might need to deviate from that plan in the future. Same revenues versus expenses chart. This one just shows a little bit more information. The dash line for the revenue represents where we were at about six months ago, and the solid line represents, I guess, more, our more conservative projections based on what we know as a reality with our reduced consumption. And that dash line really just shows potential $650,000 in savings for the next couple of years, just trying to, to close that gap a little bit. Bottom line is, looking in the out-years, we're still sitting in a situation where revenues exceed expenses, so we should be able to grow that, that fund balance. So, I don't, I tell Ron, I don't think the wastewater fund's in fantastic shape, but I think it, you know, if you're, if you're looking in the out-years, you know, there're signs that it's going to get better, so that's why I'm not going to treat it like the sky is falling, so we'll, we'll stay the course.
Come on in.
Just a question. I, when, when you present to us, I tend to think in terms of my own situation, an individual home, and what the, my bill runs comparable to average, and, but then we have the sewage that comes from Blue Township, and I don't know how to fit that into the, this, when you talk about hook, new additional hookups and how, how do, how, what's a good way for us to think in terms of how Blue Township fits here? Or, and, and it's not just them, but we do, and I think we may take on some others too, so, in general.
They're, yeah, they're our primary wholesale. I call it wholesale. We're not selling them anything. We're treating for them, but, you know, they are, obviously, at this point, our, our growth area. They do pay a premium, so I want to think they pay 1 and 1/4% of our inside-city rates. They also refund us for all connection fees on the sewer side at a, at a rate of 1 and 1/4. So, all, all system development charges that, that our customers would pay if they were inside the city, they're paying, paying that plus, plus a surcharge. So, in reality, they're helping us.
Sure.
The, the issue would become in the future is if, if we no longer are just providing the treatment, but if we're also doing some sort of maintenance. So, that's things that we're looking at in the future is, you know, if, if there's the eventuality that maybe that's our system to maintain, that may impact us, but that's, that's a pipe dream, I guess, at this point, so it's a very, very large unknown. But as far as revenues and expenses go, expenses are minimal. We do assist them with the maintenance of the large lift station out there. They reimburse us for 2/3 of those costs, so.
And it's important that as they grow, we have to grow our capacity too. And that's what you're struggling with is the growth then, in wastewater?
Well, with the growth for us, it's not just a water, water or wastewater issue. It's, it's on both sides. And the issue for us is, really, it's meeting those projections that we thought we were going to realize when we adjusted the rate structure. So, a lot of the modeling that we did was based on 2015, which was really at the peak of our, our growth.
Yeah.
And it's from there that it kind of turned down. So, you know, we, we modeled our rate structure based on the best-case scenario, and so far on the water side, it's been okay, but on the wastewater side, it hasn't, hasn't performed as well.
Thank you, Randy.
You know, I don't have a problem, you know, a lot, a lot of people concerned about us raising the, you know, the, the water rates, but the problem is, and we did that cost of services study, and we basically committed a couple of years ago to doing this incrementally, and so I think we have to proceed down that path, as you said, even though you might have a couple of hiccups there. Everybody needs to understand that, you know, the way the, you know, water department operates, it's an enterprise fund, and the idea there is to recoup the cost of the service, just like a business. And so, we have to charge what it costs to produce the water and dispose of the water. And the only other savings you can achieve is, of course, you know, whatever efficiency that you can come up with, because we're not designing this to make a profit for the city. You know, ideally, you'd want to break perfectly even, and I think that's what we're trying to do with this particular, you know, cost of service study. So, so I support the, you know, the increases. The other option, you know, years ago would have been to just run it up a huge amount right away in one year, and we definitely didn't want to do that. So, so this is the best that we're going to be able to achieve right now.
I, I mean, I wasn't here, but Ron can attest that we went down that road. So, if you, if you go back and look, there were years where it was raised by 20%. We don't want to have to go through that again.
Okay. Any public comment?
Okay. My name is Carolyn Elliott. I live at 804 Goodrich Drive here in Manhattan. I've lived here for about 50 years, so I'm well acquainted with the community and I support it. I have found it quite interesting to listen to the presentation because I didn't know we were in a three-year grouping of raises in my water bill. And with my taxes being raised the last two years, and next year it'll really go up higher because of the school bond issue, I just thought, one more thing going up, you know? And it's quite frustrating for a retired person who is on a fixed income to see these rates go up so much. I mean, taxes is, is the big one. When I got my bill for December, it was like, oh, my goodness. And I understand that the water needs to be probably done, but I know last year, when I got my first water bill, it was $175, and I about fell over because it's just me in my house. I had a leak, but I didn't know I had a leak. So, anyway, I thank you for trying to keep the, the bill straight and even and, but I almost think that the businesses need to, to foot the bill a little bit more than what they do. And I noticed you did have them on that sheet, and I didn't, I didn't comprehend all of it when I was looking at it, but, you know, at one time, we didn't allow Colbert Hills to pay their water bill, and there was a time that the university didn't pay some, and so, you know, I think back on those things that have come through, through the years, and it just irritates me that mine's going up, but I, I think that it's probably the way it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? You've seen none, we'll close the public comment. Back to, I just, I had one comment, and I don't know if you were going to make one too. You have a chart there, Randy, that showed the comparability of Manhattan to other cities? That, that was in the packet. I didn't know if you had it to show the public. At any rate, what you'll find, regardless of if you can find the slide, that's where that .79 comparability partially comes from, because we compared to other cities, and what you'll find is we're well below except Wichita and a couple of criteria, so I think we're doing pretty well. And the, the other comment I have is, I just want to make sure that you don't get yourself in a position, when you talk about not doing some maintenance activities, I, I know you're going to be careful, but I'll just tell you, be careful, because if something is not maintained, it's going to cost more in the future.
Sure.
I'm sure that's not what you meant, but that's what I heard.
Well, I, I can elaborate on, on specifically what I'm, well, it, it really is, it's a simple one. And at least on the sewer side, we spend a half a million dollars every year on rehabilitating sewer veins and manholes. Those are, those are projects that we do to extend the life of the sewer and also to reduce I and I, so stormwater inflow and groundwater infiltration. Really, the, the biggest component of those savings are maybe scaling that back. So, I'm not talking about replacing pumps at the, at the pump stations and, and the wastewater plant or doing anything like that. I, I don't want to touch personnel because everybody that we have out there, we need them. But there are some rehabilitation projects, like the, the cured-and-place pipe projects that we do, where we've been doing that every year for, you know, 10 to 15 years, and it'll be okay if we take a break or reduce those for a couple of years to try, try to save some money. I'm not going to eliminate it altogether because I want to keep that progress moving forward, but we can find savings there, so.
And I'll, I'll make a motion. We approve first reading of ordinances amending act, well, sections of chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinances to modify water and sewer rates and charges as recommended effective January 1st, 2019.
Second. Little roll, please. Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item D, consider the first reading of an ordinance amending the local limits pre-treatment regulations and pH upper limit change regarding the city's industrial pre-treatment program for discharges into the city's wastewater treatment system. And are you going to do all this yourself, Randy?
I am.
Okay.
But I do have Dr. Darar here, he's our environmental compliance manager, he oversees this program, so I'll present, but if you have any higher technical questions, you'll certainly be able to come up and answer them, so. So, this is an improvement on our existing pre-treatment ordinance. Just to give you a little bit of background on what the pre-treatments program is, it's a, it's a program that's required by EPA and KDHEs for all local municipal programs. It's a, it's geared towards industrial pre-treatment for industries that have a, they're significant industrial users, they have a unique waste characteristic that requires us to treat them a little bit differently than, you know, the standard residential or commercial business customer. So, the purpose of it, like I said, it's, it's to ensure that those significant industrial users do not discharge untreated wastewater to the system that could either interfere with our wastewater treatment process or cause us to violate our NPDS permit with the state, that could pass through pollutants to the environment, that either pollutants that our system can't treat and impact, you know, the downstream environment or communities downstream that use Kansas River for their source water, or that negatively impact our biosolids program. And so, when I talk about special wastes, it could be something of a biological or physical or chemical nature, but bottom line is, if, if any particular SIU has a wastewater characteristic that exceeds those limitations, they then have to pre-treat themselves in order to make sure what they discharge is acceptable to us. And I want to, I'll go back and talk about SIUs. There's basic, there's several ways that you could be considered an SIU. One of them is just based on the category of your industry. The other, the second one is based on the, the quantity of wastewater that they discharge. I think if, if, if any user discharges more than 25,000 gallons a day, that automatically qualifies, qualifies them as a significant industrial user. And also, like I said, based on their characteristic of their wastewater and, and how harmful it could be to our system or the environment. So, that's how we determine what a significant industrial user is. So, Manhattan's had an ordinance since 2008. City staff administers the program. We do all the permitting, we do site inspections quarterly, or every six months, or quarterly. The industries are required to sample on a, a set schedule, and we also do, do samples, regularly scheduled samples, and also sampling through surprise inspect, not surprise inspections, but, you know, inspections where it's not necessarily unannounced, but we give them a day's notice or something, we show up and we'll do an inspection. And we're responsible wholly for enforcing all those pre-treatment requirements.
Just out of curiosity, do you know how many industries or sites that we have that fall under this, that you're responsible for inspection?
Yep. I'll, I'll get the head here in the couple slides. So, as a part of our program, we are continuously audited by KDHE and the EPA. We get an inspection from KDHE every year for wastewater, on the wastewater side, and then about every three to four years, we'll get an audit through the EPA, where they come and visit and they look at all of our documents. Basically, for the past couple audits, they've said, you're doing a good job, but you need to incorporate local limits. And so, this last bullet point is the definition of a local limit, and just reading it verbatim, it's the calculated estimate of the maximum loading of any pollutant of concern that can be received at a POTW, which is a publicly owned treatment works, from all permitted industrial users without causing pass-through or interference. So, basically, what I talked to before was about impacts to the wastewater plant or the environment. So, here's a list of all the pollutants of concern that are involved with this ordinance. One through 12 are, they're not new to us, we, we've always kept a close eye on these, but 13 through 17 are the things that we typically deal with in the past. They're some of the primary parameters of our permit with the state, that we monitor both influent and effluent out of the plant. And, you know, these are some of the things that we look at with our significant industrial users. So, the ordinance will, will adopt local limits for all 17 of these. And then, Commissioner McKee, here's a list of all the existing SIUs that we have, and three of them are K-State entities. Three of these are industries within city limits, we also have one that's outside of city limits in Blue Township, but because they're part of our wastewater shed, and we oversee, we oversee some regulatory authority over Blue Township, they are a, a permitting, and of course Tallgrass was, and, you know, since they're not in operation right now, but they are permitting, and then also note that NBAF, when they come online and are commissioned, they will also be a, a permitted SIU, even though they will have pre-treatment that'll basically render their discharge on the equivalent of a, a domestic user. Can't get into the details of that one, though. So, just some, some process items that we went through with the development of local limits. City staff internally did what's called a headwork loading analysis in 2017, basically included a, a week plus or minus of data collection of wastewater influent into the plant and out of the, effluent out of the plant. We provided that information to the EPA, and the EPA went about calculating all the local limits and doing a lot of that technical work, as well as with KDHE assist at city staff and actually writing the ordinance. And so, really, now it's just up to adopt and enforce that ordinance. Last item that I want to talk about, just to make sure this is clear, because it came up from Commissioner Dodson after we submitted this initially, but all the existing permittees right now, they're, they're discharging wastewater that is well under the, the local limits of these parameters that we're establishing, so we won't have to change any of their permits just based on these new local limits. Really, where this comes into play is if future industries come to town and they have to be permitted, we will look at whatever pollutant of concern they may be discharging and, and determine how much they can discharge without requiring pre-treatment. The director does have the discretion to limit any individual new permit as far as how much of a pollutant they can discharge, so we can't, we won't have an industry that comes into town and uses up 100% of our capacity to treat arsenic or something like that. So, there are reserves built into those local limits that allow for unknowns, like pollutants that come from the residential sector that we really have limited control over, and they also account for growth in the residential side of things. So, that's really all I have on the local limits. I will note that the, the other part of the motion is to increase our pH limit in our sewer regulations. That increase is an administrative change, going from 10.5 to 11. It's really inconsec, or it's insignificant in terms of how we're going to regulate industries. What we have is a couple industries that, as a part of their process, they, they have waste that is very high in pH, so their pre-treatment is they have to lower it to 10.5 before they can discharge it. We've had some instances where they've been closer to 11, and they had to get special permission from us to discharge, even though they were above that current 10.5 limit. The upper limit of 11 is common for other municipalities, EPA and KDHE are completely okay with it, and it really shouldn't impact our regulation, other than giving us a little more, more flexibility when those particular industries have an issue with getting their pHs down to acceptable level, so. And I'm mostly speaking of some of the K-State animal research facilities, so. Pretty interesting subject, I know.
So, why, why, why don't we have it at 11 consistently? Is there, it sounds insignificant, but when we are talking about NBAF or the research that's happening at K-State, what does insignificant mean? I mean?
Currently, there is two SIUs at K-State, Fitmed and then the BRI. They do research in animals, and then when they want to get rid of the carcasses of animals, they put, put them in a bigger pressure cooker, add potassium hydroxide, and cook them, pressure cook them, and they release the waste to our sewer system. In order, sometimes when they, when, because the base of the chemical they use, sodium hydroxide, alkaline, the pH tend to be hu, hu, little bit high in the highest scale. So, some, in order to bring it down to 10.5, they use chemicals, they use carbon dioxide, and they go through a lot of work just to bring it down from 11 to 10.5. It's really insignificant in the scale of pH, because it's a logarithmic scale, and we feel like it will help us in case, instead of responding to their request and dealing with it and spending a lot of time and energy and have them spend so much money, try to correct the pH from 10.5 to 11, if we bring it to 11, and we consult with KDHE and EPA and they say that's fine.
So, there isn't a, any impact on human health?
No, there's not, nothing whatsoever, because, keep in mind, like, when the BRI release their waste, they put this in 1,000 gallon pressure cooker. Our flow daily to the plant is, is 5 million gallons, so that 1,000, 5 million is very small here. And we've been collecting data in my 22 years here, and always the pH, when it comes to the plant, is neutral, about seven. So, there's no impact whatsoever.
Well, and I think just to add to that, the reason that we have that higher limit, anything over 11 is considered detrimental, it can cause damage to the, to the pipes and the treatment process, so.
It can also argue that, you know, as we have more alkalinity, it will help our treatment plant, because in our pre-treatment plant, we convert nitrogen from ammonia to nitrate, and the process needs alkalinity, so it can argue that we, we might even benefit from raising the pH slightly higher. I, I had one clarification for the inspection. Our staff and myself, we inspect each of the SIU at least once a year, but they are required to sample quarterly, just clarification.
Any comments, questions? I just had one, and it was kind of what you answered, but one is, how do you know if somebody is discharging a heavy metal? Where, how do you know who's doing it? I guess, my assumption is that you know who has a typical process, so you can eliminate others and find out, and then what do you do about it? You know, do you, you find them and then you cut off the outflow, or what do you do?
Fortunately, we haven't had to burn that bridge, so from time to time, we'll have an upset at the plant, and we'll suspect some sort of toxic shock. Fortunately, the biological process of the plant, they typically heal themselves unless there's, you know, we've never experienced it, at least in my tenure, but other plants do experience where it's a significant toxic shock and it'll kill the plant. If there was something that was a prolonged issue and we had identified, typically when we have a plant upset and it's prolonged, and we start suspecting something like high BOD or, or a contaminant, we'll, we'll start triggering the red alarm and talk about, do we need to sample, to try to determine if we can even decipher what the pollutant is. More, more often than not, it's a slug of something that comes through, it comes through, it does us damage, it's not a consistent stream. So, you're talking about somebody that illegally dumps something, and it makes its way to the system and through the system, and then it's gone, there's no trace of it. But if there was a consistent source of something, we do have means of going in and sampling throughout the system. You know, we had a plan in place at one point this year, when we had an issue, to go sample upstream and rule out, you know, sections of the sewer system, and eventually, over time, you could narrow it down. If it was a consistent source of a pollutant, yeah, we could track it down.
Every year at Budget Type, I ask the question if our guys at the trade shows and stuff have found the company that's built the built-in sensors that you place in the line, that gives you that warning that, you know, but so many of the threats are chemical, biological, I mean, they're just, the, the spectrum that you have to measure is, is remarkable, but I'm, I'm hopeful that one of these days, they're going to say, XYZ company has this one and this one, and if we put them in the system, then you got to figure out far enough ahead that you can divert the flow, so it doesn't kill your bugs. So, that's, that's one of the challenges we have with an aerobic system, and that's something that hopefully technology will improve over time and will give us some risk abatement.
I've had to restart two or three of those a couple of times, and it's not any fun, so. Any, any more comments? Any public comment? Seeing none? Entertained a motion?
I move, we approve first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 32 to include local limit, local limits, pre-treatment regulations and pH upper limit.
I'll second. Gary, color roll.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We're at item E, consider the first reading of an ordinance amending stormwater rates, and it will be presented by Bron Johnson, City.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Tonight's discussion is 2019 fee adjustment for the stormwater program. As Randy had alluded to, and as four of you have been through, cost of services study identified two main criteria for the stormwater fee rates. The first one was, the old system was inequitable. It required higher payments per square area for residential. Commercial is getting subsidized to the effect of about 40%. It also said that the stormwater fund was unsustainable. Over the course of time, we would either not do stormwater projects, or we'd have to raise rates to, in order to meet our balances. First part of the 2018 year, the commission passed, I've got this in the background section, commission passed moving to what's called an equivalent unit system. Almost every city in Kansas does that, so we implemented that July 1st of 2018, and then this would be the second phase of that five-year flattening. So, background information, commission adopted equivalent units method in December of 17 and approved the five-year flattening program. Two goals of the flattening program, again, were to eliminate the commercial subsidy and secure the financial, financial health of the stormwater program out to 2030. First phase of that flattening program was implemented July 1st, 2018, that's when those first bills went out. Second phase, flattening program will be implemented July, or January 1st, 2019, if the commission so chooses. Recommended five-year rates, 2018, we're at 396 for commercial per unit, residential's at 534 per unit. Again, that's now down to about a 30% subsidy from commercial to residential. As you go out in time, that commercial rises faster, so it gets to that 755 mark out at 2022, which is what the cost of services study said we need to do in order to maintain the financial health of the stormwater system. I think this is the slide you were talking about with Randy. So, this is our stormwater rates at the 2019 rate, the 465 per unit rate for commercial. All of these others are the 2018 rates that folks in those other cities are paying. Every city goes through an implementation January 1st, so we'll get the newest data January 1st, what these other cities have done. But as the chart shows, we're actually the lowest or the second lowest in the entire state of Kansas for our stormwater fees. Wichita is the one outlier, they are a little bit cheaper than us. The one thing I would add to that is Wichita has two mills of property tax dedicated to their stormwater system, which in the city of Wichita is probably two or $3 million. It's a big number, because Wichita has a huge valuation. As we program out, Finance Department did a bunch of work for us, appreciate that, Bernie and his staff. This is what our projected balances are. This is our recommended balance, so we are clearing that recommended balance by about a million dollars out in 2029. The thing I would add to this, though, is there are no costs for the levy or anything on Wildcat Creek with the studies that we're doing in these yet, because those are not approved CIPs. So, this, this number here could go up or down in the near future, probably within the next 12 to 18 months, we'll have those studies back, we'll also have more information back from the Corps on the levy, and then we'll have those discussions at a work session or legislative session on how we plan to fund those. Major capital improvements that are in Major capital improvements that are in the CIP and are in this graph. TCB North Channel Project. In fact, December 18th, we'll be back with you folks to look at a contract for engineering services with a local consultant that we selected to design this project. Intent of that project, route stormwater away from the TCB ditch north up to Casement and Hayes and through the gate well structure that's going to be rebuilt with the levy project. 2020, South Manhattan Interceptor. That's intercept stormwater along South Manhattan from Points down to Wildcat Creek. Try to divert flows off of Points and divert flows from going downtown. 2021, we got Casement Road. The goal of that is to enclose that ditch that's on the west side of Casement from Knox to Butterfield. 2021 is also when our TA grant is projected to be funded. We should hear back on that grant here sometime in January. It's possible we could combine some projects and leverage those grant dollars even further. Carney Street and Third Street Outfall. Third Street and Carney, where we have the flooding issue down there, down by the businesses, North Sonic. 5.2 million in 2022. The goal of that is to intercept water along Carney, along Third Street as we work our way eventually back all the way to North Manhattan, to the Campus Creek area. This is that first phase to work back to Campus Creek. Goal is to intercept water from there, try to get water under TCB into the ditch and then also into the pretty ditch and then also north up to Casement and Hayes. 2024 is 14th Street Interceptor. That picks up water, stormwater from 14th and Blumont and Anderson, that area that floods quite frequently. Pick up stormwater there, transfer it down south, get it down South Manhattan. And then Middle Carney is the second phase of the Carney Street. If you look at this schedule, we're being very aggressive. You have funded us to a level where we can be aggressive in the stormwater fund. Every two years, we're trying to do a major downtown or Northview type of project with Casement Road and Carney. We're trying to be very aggressive in areas where we have flooding and trying to get water out of the streets and into the ditches. Recommendation, so as shown on slide seven with the proposed five-year flattening program, current project fund balance exceeds the proposed operating expenses, which was one of the primary goals of the cost of services study. Once flattening is completed in 2022, or another way to say that is once that balance is in equilibrium between commercial and residential, we look at a flat increase per year, whatever an inflationary adjustment would be per year after 2023. So with that, I'll stand for questions or comments that the commissioners have.
Comments?
I think this is just like, you know, the other fund. We decided years ago we needed to flatten this out and it was very unequal between commercial and residential, and that'll fix it. And then the other thing is, you know, we continually have problems when we get to large rains. And the only way that's ever going to get repaired is if we can do those CIP projects, which have to be funded this way. And so that's part of the whole flood issue that's been, you know, troubling the city. So it's very important that we continue with this.
Under the former revenue stream, we could do one project about a decade. So we've moved those up to about one every other year now.
I don't mind. I think Commissioner Butler is correct. But anytime we make some increases, like Carolyn had a shock when she saw her bill. Let's try to get in front of it as far as informing the community via their social media or if they're still getting their snail mail and all of that, that they're informed about the rates going up, especially for the commercial properties. If they're apartment complexes or something that's going to go on down to their tenants, we want to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on and not sticker shock at the same time. Did you say that the, our share, our match for the levy improvements will come out of this fund?
No, we have not programmed a fund for the levy yet. In fact, we don't know what the exact amount is yet. We are anticipating somewhere between $8 and $10 million for that levy fund. We have paid for design out of this fund already. You approved that payment a couple of months ago, about $600,000. So we have, you know, already paid some of that, some of that fee out of this fund. Sometime next spring, probably April, May, the Corps will be doing some sort of a work session to just kind of get everybody up to speed on what we're looking at.
So it's not immediate? We don't have to come up with that eight to 10 million?
Probably not by the end of the week, but I'll see what next week brings.
Well, that would affect this for?
It's probably 2020.
Yeah, okay.
That's kind of the timeline we're working on right now. I actually had a conference call with the Corps today.
Okay, good.
That work session in April or May, we hope to have a lot of answers. Until then, we're kind of working around what that schedule would be. I mean, as anybody that's worked with the Corps of Engineers knows, it's a huge department. And the conference call today had about 40 people on it. So we had about 80 opinions that we worked through. But April, May, we're going to have some sort of a work session and just kind of lay out the timeline and the costs and when those costs are due.
For the last couple of years, we've been saying, wait, wait, when the Corps gets the money, when they get the money, and suddenly we got a letter saying they've got it, so.
We not only got the design money, which we were shocked to get, we also got funding for construction, which just completely came out of left field for us. So we're in reactionary mode, too.
I'll thank you for the information.
I'm happy to see that over the previous commissions and your improvements put us in a position where we can be aggressive on some of those capital improvements.
Yeah, that's really the credit to these four commissioners that worked through that cost of services study with us. It was about a three-year process. We found out a lot of things we didn't know, which is why you do a cost of services study, also set us up for the future, too.
Yeah, the Kearney Street, Kearney Street, Third Street improvements are, I've only ever had one terrifying experience in my life, and it was probably three or four years ago, that major rain event, McDonald's. I drove through the roundabout and there was maybe this much water. And I turned down that street and it immediately turned into like a foot of.
It was a wall, wasn't it?
Yeah. And I drove a Nissan Xterra at the time and there was water flowing over the top of my hood at Points. It was a really, there were people setting on top of their cars. It was a scary, scary thing. So I'm glad to see that we're making improvements in that and that we've set ourselves up to be able to do that. So I support this.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, closed public comment. May I ask for a vote?
I'll make a motion that we approve first reading of an ordinance setting the commercial storm rate at 465 per month per equivalent unit and the residential stormwater rate at 582 per month effective January 1st, 2019.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries five, zero.
We're now to item F. It's an update on funding options regarding the southeast neighborhood recreation center in Douglas Park. And it'll be Jason.
Well, continue to wait and see if this computer wants to respond or not. It's got a lot open.
Is that an update?
Is it off? Well, you all have a paper copy, but I don't, so. Down again, dang it. All right, we'll go with the old school version here, paper. I apologize to those in the audience. I didn't pull this up or it had been on the desktop. That's a good question. I think you actually have to turn that thing on. It's been a while since somebody's used the overhead here. I don't even know if it'll connect. It may need the same connection point. Well, I think the majority of the folks behind me have heard my presentation before. So I think they're pretty informed as to what we're talking about. But I'll go through it and they can ask questions along with you all, if you have them. We plan to construct a $3.3 million facility with a loan through CDBG in Section 108. We've been working on this project for a couple of years. And I do appreciate Bruce McMillan and his team being here this evening. I invited them here just in the event you all had more questions. We clearly went through a design back in April, actually in February with the commission. And we got to a point where you all were comfortable with that design. We became aware of a snag in our cash basis law with HUD created a conflict. We proposed an alternative to HUD that would basically get around that cash basis law. And the terms at which we proposed were rejected by their lender. We could not reach agreement on a security that the city would have in the event CDBG funds wouldn't be allocated by Congress. So we were all in agreement about using CDBG funds for annually for the next 20 years for the project. There wasn't anything wrong with the project. Wasn't anything wrong with using those funds. It was the situation if the federal government quit funding CDBG. The bank was looking for security from the city for the asset that they were investing in or controlling the debt on. So we had an option to either set aside enough cash to satisfy that lender at just over $5 million or pursue another funding mechanism within the city. Geo bonds are what we've identified that could be funded by a variety of different sources here at the city. The last option there is obviously delaying the project or deciding not to pursue the improvement itself as the other options on the table. As I mentioned, Bruce and his team are here this evening. We've come to a completed project of approximately about $4 million. The 3.3 basically covers the building and the interior improvements itself. There are over $700,000 worth of improvements on the exterior of this facility, mainly dealing with site prep, utility lines being relocated underground, parking, parking lots, parking stalls, sidewalks, our lighting. There's a cooler that functions for the breadbasket as well. And we have to relocate that. And all of those are eligible for CDBG funds through our annual program. And we could leverage $150,000 out of that program for the next five years and actually go ahead and use CDBG at the site. So we've proposed this $4 million concept at this point in time, moving forward with this general funding strategy. Included some images for you all just as a reminder of the facility and what it looks like. And just quickly, I'll point out, this is the expansion area. It's the potential down the road. This court space is not part of the 3.3. This is that, we're just highlighting it on here to show you all that we could expand and gain another court at some point in the future. These two courts, which are the cross courts, and then there's a main court that runs east and west. There's a three-lane track around the outside of this facility. And then this is the entryway that Bruce and the team designed. There's an image that's just kind of a blow up of the entry just because it was hard to read in that previous image. It's not any better on this thing. But the lobby in which you would enter and then has a door access that comes in, obviously to the track that runs around the courts. Restrooms, janitorial, family restroom, staff offices. There's a mechanical area outside as well. There's a couple of images that we had of both inside the facility, giving you an idea of what it looks like on the interior and then an exterior picture as well. Again, just reminders of where we were at with that. As I suggested, could be a general obligation bond issued for the $3 million in debt. That annual payment is anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000. And that depends if we're going 15 years or 20 years with that debt structure. That $250,000 to $300,000 is a half mil increase. It could be a portion of the special sales tax that we have talked about, which would raise our sales tax rate from 8.95 to either 9.05 or 9.15 or 9.25, depending on what rate, you know, we would land on. That would obviously be a ballot question back to the community. It could take two forms. We're actually at a 1% rate for the community today. We have the capacity by law to go up to 2%, and that's a permanent rate. Or you can go a 10-year sunset type of ballot initiative, which is predominantly what we've done in the near past here with special sales tax, either for our roads or for our parking rec quality of life stuff. We typically structure those in 10 years and then bring them back for the community to consider again. The other special sales tax, oh, and we generate $1 million annually, a little over $1 million today for every 0.1% that you're contemplating. The other special sales tax is the renewal of the economic development tax. That's a 0.5% part of our 8.95 today. That is a Riley County tax that generates roughly $5 million, of which the county gets two and the city gets three on an annual basis. There is a scenario and a strategy to create the renewal just for city, which would incorporate both the city limits in Riley and Potawatomi County. And it, too, generates $5 million for that half percent. Currently, we use 35% of our $3 million revenue generation for economic development purposes for debt retirement and our bond and interest. It's a property tax relief portion of our economic development tax. If it grows to 5 million, you could look at either keeping that percentage the same or tweaking that, however you all see fit. But that obviously could help the bond and interest with not only this debt, but other debts. And I know Mayor Dodson asked for this again this evening. There are a number of projects. We've talked about the levy tonight. We could talk about the runway. We could talk about CENREC. We could talk about the joint maintenance facility building, Aggieville, North Campus Corridor. And we can get that all on paper for you and show you. But that's a large number. You start adding all those together. It's a very large number. Clearly, as indicated, we have revenue sources for some of those projects that aren't just what I'm talking about up here. But these could be very important as we move forward and consider how we're going to fund all those projects and all those improvements. Next steps, we just kind of laid out a number of action items. Bond resolutions, which you all see quite often when we're going to issue debt on projects, whether that's a street project like West Anderson or improvements within our infrastructure. We issue those bond resolutions, which basically start the clock. About a three and a half, four-year window before that permanent. four-year window before that permanent debt hits the bond and interest and starts to be an impact on debt financing. I think Bruce and his team are ready, or they're close to ready. They could be out for bid by January or February. We could be awarding that contract in March and that construction could actually start in April. But I just want you to be aware, whenever there's a decision, if there's a decision to fund it, it's about a four-month process before you're going to see that under construction. There's a utility relocation contract, which we could move forward with really at any time. West R is poised and ready, as well as the cable companies that are down in that area to put that below ground. I will tell you that if the facility stays the size that it is and in the location it is, that line has to go underground. It's too close to the building exterior for us to build where it's located today. And West R would prefer to go underground today. Happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I know Bruce and his team are here. If you've got specifics about the project, Dave Baker, who runs our Douglas Center and our Douglas Park is also here and I think has some comments for you all. I know Debbie Ness wrote you all a letter today from the Douglas Center Advisory Board. She's in the audience as well, so happy to answer or entertain questions.
Bruce, I can't remember off the top of my head, and maybe you do. What was the difference in price for the race track versus what we eventually decided with the lower track?
Commissioner, Bruce McMillan, 555 Points Avenue. I don't have that specific number in front of me, but my recollection is that that, including not just the track, that would have also included the structural capacity for the either support below or suspended from a roof structure was adding about a million dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we had some options in February of that track being above, but it was a two-lane.
It was at least two, possibly three.
And I had that presentation in the K-Drive, which isn't doing me a whole lot of good right now, but we can get that information out.
We can get that back for you, but that's the approximate amount that it was going to add to the cost of the building overall was about a million dollars, as I recall.
It may be worthwhile to hear from the public before we make a comment.
Just one question. Does this one have the elevator? I forgot if this was...
No, this is a single-floor facility with a track on grade.
All right, thank you.
So, we'll now open it for public comment. Those wishing to speak, please come forward.
Mayor Dodson, Commissioners, my name is Debbie Ness. I reside at 2404 Sumac Drive and I'm here tonight as Chair of the Douglas Center Advisory Board. As Jason mentioned, I sent a letter to you by email this morning outlining the discussion that the Douglas Center Advisory Board had at its meeting on Thursday, November 8th, when Mr. Hilders informed us about this challenge with the funding through the Section 108 loan. And the reason I'm coming forward now is I want to make sure that the recommendations from the Douglas Center Advisory Board become part of the public record since that letter was sent to you. So, I'm not going to read the whole letter. I'm just going to do the highlights since you do have the letter. But the Douglas Center Advisory Board unanimously recommends that the City Commission reaffirms its commitment to constructing the Recreation Center at the Douglas Community Center complex. The Board also recommends that the City Commission finances the projects through the issuance of general obligation bonds. The suggestion about sales tax, the Board wasn't interested in that because there's no guarantee that a sales tax would pass and then thus it would delay construction of the project even further. The Board also recommends that the City Commission establishes a steering committee tasked with reevaluating the plan for the proposed Douglas Recreation Center to ensure that it meets the needs of the neighborhood and community and, to the degree possible, is comparable with the recreation centers proposed for the two middle schools. This has been an ongoing concern of the Douglas Center Advisory Board, to ensure that the amenities of all these facilities are equitable, not necessarily equal. They don't need to be the same, but they are at least equitable. And then finally, the Board recommends that the City Commission allows for public-private partnerships to fund the construction of the proposed Recreation Center. That recommendation is under the assumption that the Commission was still probably wanting to look at financing at the $3.3 million amount. And because the Board is interested in these additional amenities, like the race track, some additional space across the front of the building that would provide more flexibility with the use of the space, we would be interested in pursuing some private dollars to help make up the difference. And some discussions have been held with some individuals in the community and there is some interest in that. We recognize that that would delay the project for a little while. Talked with Jason just a little bit, so tonight was the first time I'd seen that timeline that he proposed, but if we were given the opportunity to explore the possibility of some kind of public-private partnerships, that might delay that timeframe, four to six months possibly. But ultimately though, that could be of great benefit to the community in terms of what might happen at this facility. So, again, we recognize there's some challenges with this, but it also may give us an opportunity then to do something more than what had been proposed before. So, thank you.
Thank you. David, were you going to come up and speak?
Mayor Dodson and Commissioners, my name is David Baker. I live at 2626 Sumac here in Manhattan, Kansas. I am the Director at Douglas Center. I've been there for the last, since 2011. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about what goes on there and how important that the Douglas Center is to this community. Douglas Center today is the only recreation center that we have here in Manhattan, Kansas. A recreation center is a facility that multiple things can go on at one time. And you have to have a facility that those things can happen. And that's why this facility that we're wanting to construct is so important to this community. The two facilities that we're going to be building at the middle schools, those are going to be very, very nice facilities. Those basically are going to be gyms, not what you would call full-fledged recreation facilities. The things that we have going on at the Douglas Center right now are multiple activities that you have in recreation centers. It's the only place today where kids can come and play in a safe environment and it's free, and this is what recreation is all about. Our new facilities that we're going to build at the schools, those are going to be primarily gyms and you will be able to do recreational things in there, but we have so many other activities going on at the Douglas Center today. I grew up in that recreation center and I probably would not be standing here today had I not had that center to go to when I was a kid. So, I think it's important and vital that we really consider getting this construction done as soon as possible and it's going to be an asset to this community for the future. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much. I was just going to ask, is it your opinion then that we should make an alternative plan and wait a little bit and then see if we have some private money to add to the public money for this, or would you rather proceed with the old plan under bonding?
I would proceed with the old plan and if we could make some minor changes in that process, we could do that. I know we had had several other alternatives before we came to the final plan that we have now, so I think those adjustments could be made fairly quickly.
Thank you.
So, to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, Dave. You're in favor and you're okay with like right now the track not being raised?
I feel like the track should be raised. And the main reason why is because, again, like I said, you want multiple activities going on. And when that track, if you've got people walking around a track and things going on in gym, there's always more chance for accidents in that situation.
So, you would be okay with us revisiting that course?
Yes.
I appreciated the point that you made about recreation centers. I've been reading, that seems to be what other communities are building and what they're calling it as a recreation center. That isn't as limiting.
And one of the things that we would have here, instead of having one building, we're going to keep the Douglas Center, it's not going anywhere, the Douglas School Annex, and when we add this, we're talking about a recreation complex, which would basically be the same as having one building, but we would have multiple activities being able to go on at one time.
Sure.
And one of the other things, prime time is when people are getting off work and that's when you need a facility where you can do multiple things.
Is the facility that we were planning for Douglas Center comparable to the other two? Is it smaller? It is smaller.
It's smaller.
But because of the other buildings and the complex, that makes it okay?
Well, you would be able to do more things with the other buildings, but the gyms that we're going to build at the middle schools, those are basically gyms. We're talking about having, I have a dance group that's been dancing there for over 20 years, so we could still accommodate that. There's just a lot of things that we'll be able to continue to do and do more of in a set time, rather than having to have an activity go on and wait until the activity's over before we do another one.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
I do have an additional question and that is...
Close public comment first.
Oh, okay.
So, hearing nothing, I'll close public comment and we'll go back to Commissioner.
I just wondered about the request for a steering committee. Is it too late for a steering committee? I mean, is this the, is there still time for a steering committee to weigh in?
Yeah. We can take the time necessary to do whatever the Commission and Advisory Board would like to do. It really, you know, where I hear David is, you know, there's some minor adjustments we can make and I think Bruce has a lot of those plans, you know, in the works. So, if we want to raise the track, we can talk about raising the track. If we want to add space, we can do that. You know, being funded under that 108 loan, using all CDBG federal funds, we were pretty tight on a budget and we didn't let a lot of discussion happen just because we knew we were going to be pushed. We didn't want to necessarily burden the bond and interest fund and other revenue sources at the time, knowing we were going to build those middle school gymnasiums. We never really had that broad conversation of what exactly could we do down here. The budget impact of this is now fully within bond and interest and it becomes, you know, kind of in that mix of priorities of what we're going to fund and what we're not going to fund. We can take the time the Commission would like us to take to look at this and see where the priorities are with the neighborhood again. It's not to say we didn't do it, it's just we all always knew along the way where the funding source was and the capacity of it.
I felt like we designed it to fit the money and we have the opportunity here to design it to fit the community's needs there.
I think that's a fair statement.
I would be interested in pursuing the application for the Community Development Block Grant, whatever you're able to get with that. And that's with regard to these site preparation. That's this year. Will we be eligible for additional money next year then? Or when is the year? Is it January 1 or is it October 1?
I alluded to that with that $750,000.
Right.
$150,000 a year for the next five years.
I see, all right.
Yeah. And Eric pointed out some bullets that are in your memo of some decisions that are critical to that. We can even pay for Bruce's design from CDBG monies if we commit to the project.
Got it.
That's part of that $750K.
Sure.
I think our bill to date is anywhere from $250,000 to $275,000 and we could pay for that out of CDBG funding that we have currently if we commit to this project.
I was looking at the big $750,000.
But what's the timeline on that commitment? That's the key.
By summertime, by May-June.
Okay.
That's for the first $150,000?
That's for, actually, we can spend about almost $300,000 of existing dollars in the bank right now if we commit to the project and we want to pay that fee.
When you say commit to the project, do you mean, yes, we're going to build something there or we're going to build, here's the blueprint and we're committing to something that's specific?
Yeah, I think we would need a bond resolution passed by the Commission, committing to the project, before we'd feel comfortable spending those federal dollars on design for the facility.
Well, we know we're going to need the site preparation, no matter what. Okay.
Just quick comments from me going down the list. It's been alluded to in previous meetings that we shouldn't overrule as the City Commission Advisory Board's suggestions and I would hope that would hold true tonight with the suggestions that the Douglas Center Advisory Board made on such an important topic. In terms of the commitment, I have total commitment in pursuing this still, even with the hiccup that we had. When I think about neighborhood revitalization, when we talk about that a lot with housing, I think about those downtown older neighborhoods and where I would love to see more investment and I really consider the Douglas Center an anchor of many of those neighborhoods. So, this isn't just about providing recreational spaces, providing an anchor for those neighborhoods so further investment can occur. So, I'm fully committed to this project. In terms of what you laid out here, in terms of how we pay for the $3.3 million in debt, the renewal of the Economic Development Sales Tax, I think would be the first path that I would like to see us take. If we're going to be getting additional dollars if we're able to make that a city sales tax and it passes, I think that's the first place. For whatever reason that fails, then I think that we can look at the half mil levy, but I would rather start there with something that's existing rather than a tax increase. So, that's just my initial thoughts on that. But really, before we even dig into that, I do think that we need to take a step back and let the, at least the Advisory Board or some sort of steering committee look at this plan, because we were completely driven by the CDBG budget the first time we talked about this and that was one of the reasons why we didn't pick the racetrack. I can't think of another good reason why we didn't pick that other than the budget. And so, if they're suggesting that there's private money out there, I would, I can't think of a good reason why we would rush the project and give up those private dollars. I mean, there's just not a good reason. If that's more suitable for the center, we need to give them time to try to bring that money in and relook at that project. So, I'm fully committed to this. I think we need to take a step back, let the Advisory Board, see what they can come up with or steering committee come up with. But it's a hiccup, but I still think it can be done and I think it's important for the community and it's important for those neighborhoods, so I want to see it done.
So, my thought is, of course, this was driven by the funding and, you know, some people are saying, well, here's an opportunity to increase it and there's an opportunity to increase your taxes, which in my mind, we've done enough. You know, we heard some of that tonight. So, I want to stay with the funding. And I don't have a problem if somebody wants to raise private funds and make it bigger, but they're going to have to do it rather quickly and we haven't been overly successful with that. You know, we heard that about the stage that's behind you and they were going to raise private funds and what happened? The City Commission committed half a million dollars to the stage project, which went on your property taxes. project, which went on your property taxes. So I'm not, I'm not fully, you know, optimistic that somebody's going to create a lot more money. I also think, you know, you, you have the ability to use $750,000 of block grant money, but you're going to have to do that pretty quick. And we already went through, you know, a whole bunch of discussions on, you know, the design of the building and compromises. I know a lot of folks wanted that elevated track, but it also had some problems with storage and some other things underneath it. But, but I think we need to stay within the budget. And, and we, we could execute that and get this thing, you know, built in April, which was the idea because it's behind schedule now. And then we'd all agreed to that before. And I agree with Commissioner McGee on, on the, you know, sales tax question. I, I don't want to see us raise sales taxes anymore. I do want to see us push for renewal of that economic development tax to include the Potawatomi County side of the city, and that should raise more revenue. And if we use at least 35% of it, as we have been, for property tax reduction, that would then provide the revenue source for paying off this bond. And, and that keeps us within the original, you know, funding thing because I, you know, we, we can't just keep taking out bonds and making things bigger. You know, it's, it's like, you know, we made a decision. It's like the Mercury said in one of their opinion pieces a while back. They said we've got, you know, champagne appetite on the beer budget, and they were 100% right. And we just need to use the beer budget for this.
I don't even know if we have the beer budget, but I think we have nothing right now, and we're trying to figure out how to get something. So being denied, the proposal being denied may be a silver lining of sorts. I think originally, the Douglas Board has always recommended the track on top and the elevator. And we were going with the proposed funding source because that would alleviate us dedicating any of the city money towards it. So I think that was, that was the main drive for this. Coming back a second time around, we have to fund through a variety of sources that you already mentioned. I'm not tied to the timeline. If we have to think about a funding source, then we have to consider either the geo-bonds or the sales tax. I think we need to look at that just a little bit closer to what it looks like. One of the things with the sales taxes, we did increase it, or at least the community was good about giving approval to increase it. But at the same time, we've also seen declines in our sales tax, bringing in our sales tax revenue. So I want to be cautious on how we use that. If we have it for just a certain time limit, maybe, I don't know how long, you said 10, 20 years, but if we have a sunset to it just for this proposed project, I would be fine too. We talked about private funds. I think we need to look at that whole financing structure again. And if even David Baker said it would be better to have the track on top, I think that's something to look at. This is a recreation center, and we don't have a YMCA around here. And YMCA's in other communities are driven by private entities, and we don't have a private entity to do something like that in Manhattan, Kansas. I've been to Douglas Center plenty of times, and it's utilized all the time. It's quite busy, in fact. So I don't mind looking at it. I'm not, I don't think we, we're not under any time constraints that make it seem like we have to do it by January or February. And we should probably have a thorough discussion, and I think that's why it's coming back the way it did. Just looking at all the members that are here at 10 o'clock to still discuss this means they're dedicated to this and want to make sure we're doing it right this time as well. So...
Can I, I see. Point of clarification, because, because, you know, Commissioner Reddy is saying we don't have a timeline. But again, are we going to lose those community block grant monies if we don't commit it and, and take out a general obligation bond before a certain date?
The exposure is really on us carrying a balance forward greater than, is it $1.5 million after May? Right now, we have in the CDBG bank about $900,000, and we'll get another $600,000 in May or June, and we, we'll, we'll get in trouble from the feds.
See, and that's the point. We do have some constraints, but we, maybe the staff can outline, you know, what that is.
Yeah. And we could go move forward with the utility relocate, or we could, again, if there's a commitment, which it sounds like there really is a pretty strong one, and we can get that formalized, and we can pay Bruce's fees, and we can move forward on that utility relocate.
Because I think whether we get an elevated track or not, we're going to need to relocate utilities. So I'd like to see us do that. And then the other point of clarification is, you know, we, we talked about the economic development tax, but we're not going to wait for that to build this. What has to happen is, we have to commit to the general obligation bond and then anticipate that that will be the source. If it doesn't happen, we're going to have to fund it through mil levy. It's, it's just that simple. But that's really not any different than, you know, we were banking on getting the community block grants, and if Congress hadn't approved it, we'd have had to put it out of something else anyway. So, so I think everybody has to understand that. That's why, you know, I don't see, you know, waiting forever. And, and I don't know what the difference is on that track, if it's, if it's a small amount, but maybe it's a wash. We can put that in there if that, if that's the main deal. But I just want to be sure we don't lose those community block grant monies that we have available by waiting too long.
I think it was about $200,000. I don't remember. It was...
That was my memory too.
Yeah. I think it was about $200,000. I think that's doable. But because we want to put it between the $3.3 million, that's why that was guiding it. It wasn't astronomical. And what I mean, we don't have a deadline for this. I was thinking more like, within the next six months, four to six months, we can figure it out. Certainly, I don't want to keep extending it over and over again, but I do think maybe in a month or two, we can finalize something rather quickly.
So in a way, we're back to where we were some time ago. But I think all of us support this. We're disappointed, obviously, that it's not going to pop out of the ground in the spring. I'd like to see some options. And as far as the track, you know, we, we looked at the design of the two elementary schools, and those have drop-down nets to protect the track from the activities inside. So, you know, I'm, I'm more prone to support something that is utilitarian rather than putting an elevator to get to the running track. I just think that's folly. Now, I think we have to set a time period where we're pretty sure we've got private funding. Because if we don't have private funding, it's another equation. I mean, if, if, if somebody suggests that this thing ought to cost $5 million, and they're going to get $2 million of private funding, then we're about where we are now with the same problem. But if we can't get private funding, and it's going to cost $5 million, we've got to rethink. And so I'd like to see a timeline, some options, and then, to me, that drives how we finance it. You know, right now, we have some thoughts about how to finance $3.5 million, but not how to finance 5, so... Well, depends on what the plan is.
Yeah. We can explore some.
Now, the plan is expansion of the current... So... All right. Seeing no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 10:39.
Still within our boundaries. Stop mid-night.